Good evening. Welcome to the East Hampton City Council meeting for Wednesday, December 2nd, 2020. The meeting tonight is being recorded and broadcast live via East Hampton Media on Charter Channel 193 and livestreamed on East Hampton Media's YouTube channel. Our thanks, as always, go out to the East Hampton Media team. They are outstanding. All councilors and participants in this meeting are gathered remotely via Zoom conferencing. Remote public meetings during COVID-19 pandemic are the result of an executive order by Governor Baker on March 12th, allowing us to do so. I remind both the members of the city council and the public to remain on mute until recognized by the chair. The meeting is now called to order. Barb, roll call.
Peggy Coniff?
Here.
Salem Derby?
Present.
Omar Gomez?
Here.
JP Kozinski?
Here.
Erica Flood?
Here.
Tom Peak?
Here.
Dan Rist?
Here.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Here.
Owen Zaret?
Here.
Will now rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands
One nation
under God indivisible
with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We have no minutes to approve. So at this time, we will open it up for public speak. Just a reminder, for those who are attending this meeting to speak on any topic other than what is in the public hearing, please remember that this is your turn to speak, so the council will be listening, but we will not be responding to your comments in any way. If you would like to speak, use the Raise Your Hand feature by selecting Participants at the bottom of your screen, then click Raise Hand at the bottom of that window. If you are dialing in via phone only, you can raise your hand by pressing *9. You can mute or unmute your line by pressing *6. Before you comment, state your name and your street or your town if you do not live in East Hampton. You will have three minutes to make your comment. I will be having a timer on. You hopefully should hear it when it runs out. If you are in the middle of a sentence, you can finish the sentence when you are finished. Tonight, we have a public hearing at 6:15, so public speak will be paused at 6:15 until the completion of that hearing. Once the public hearing has completed, we will resume public speak. It probably took me longer to say that than we may have for public speak, but that's okay. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on something other than what we have on the public meetings? You can go ahead and raise your hand if you would like to. I suspect people are here for the public hearings, so seeing none. Okay, I don't see any. So, all right, we have a few minutes, obviously, before we need to start the public hearings, so we can move into, actually, Casey, we may get to before the public hearing, communication from elected officials. Anyone have anything to say to the community? Counselor Peak?
Yeah, I'll make this quick if I can. I just wanted to quickly say, you know, in the finance meeting on Monday, there was some discussion about affordability issues in town. And I think I got a little freaked out, just about sort of the broader affordability issues that are going on, and particularly about, you know, where market rate housing fell in relation to, you know, the median East Hampton resident. And just sort of generally about the system we have, not just in East Hampton, but really in Hampshire County in Massachusetts, and to some extent, the United States, where the free market is not producing, it's not just that it's not producing housing that people in poverty could afford, it's not producing housing that, like, you know, most people can afford. And sort of just the way that a lot of this was being discussed kind of really brought a lot of this stuff that I guess I intellectually knew, really kind of brought it home in a way, and I responded by sort of, you know, talking about how upsetting this whole situation is. It was not my intent in any way to cast dispersions on the project or on all the people in the city who have worked so hard on it. I just thought it was important for me to say that because I didn't want to, I was worried after, when I was thinking through how that meeting went down, that some of the stuff I said might have come off the wrong way. And since a lot of folks from the city and the council were there, I just wanted to take the opportunity now to make it clear that I think the broad housing situation in our community is disturbing on a number of levels, but my intention was never to call into question all the hard work that everybody does.
Thank you, Tom. Anyone else have any comments they'd like to make before we move on? Okay. I had, Casey, if you're still here, I had asked Casey Corsello to attend, I think she's still there, she is, and she and I were talking this afternoon, and I told her I wasn't sure we were going to get to her thing, but looks like we'll be able to get to it. Casey, if you can give a presentation before, say, 6:15, we'll have to wrap at 6:15, but I asked Casey to attend to kind of give a brief update/overview of a project called Blueprint East Hampton that she's been working very hard on to get both the community as well as the council up to speed, a lot of the council is up to speed, but to give kind of an overview of what that is and what's going on. So Casey, I'm going to make you a co-host because I think you might want to share something, and then I will turn it over to you for the next seven, eight, nine minutes.
Okay, I'm going to keep this really short. This is great, yes. Okay, what I'm going to do is I'm just going to give just a brief overview, and then I'm going to share my screen and walk, how do you surf through the website? I don't even know what that means, walk people through the website? Hi. Hello, everyone. Hello, Chair, person Coniff, and city councilors. Just want to say thank you all for your incredible work in this incredibly strange time, difficult time, so I appreciate all that you do for our city. Just wanted to say that. Okay, so Blueprint East Hampton. Mayor, can you just give like 30-second background about how this came to be with the Kaufman Foundation and National League of Cities?
Yeah, so two years ago, I started going to the Mayor Innovation Conference that was sponsored by the Kaufman Foundation through that work and this really kind of a social equity lens of looking at entrepreneurship, innovation in existing business models, but also what are called the side gigs, how to promote and support them within small cities. From there, the National League of Cities granted us the city money to form a hub for entrepreneurs, innovators, and also folks who wanted to make more formal or structure or grow what would be a side gig, somebody knitting sweaters to somebody who's making gadgets. Once we got that grant, we named the project Blueprint East Hampton, and the first step was our small business grants, and this website, which is Resource Finder, is something that Casey took on as a project last April and was funded through a grant we got from the National League of Cities. So take it away, Casey.
Thank you for that, Mayor. Yes, so as many of you know, I am a business owner here in East Hampton. My husband and I own Corsella Butcheria, and we started that based on a vision and a dream and not having any experience as a business owner, and many entrepreneurs are in the same boat. They have an idea or they have something they want to bring forth. And really, what it takes to create a business and then sustain a business, it's a lot of work and a lot of knowledge. And along the way, as I said before, part of having a successful business is having some business acumen. And I didn't have, you know, you can go to school, you can get an MBA, but not everybody needs or has the money to get an MBA, and there's a lot of learning along the way. So what we found, and by resource partners, what I mean are your chambers of commerce, the Massachusetts Small Business Association, the Valley Community Development Center, SCORE. There are just many in the area, and as we know, with our city being what it is, it's regional, so the partners, they're not all in East Hampton. And so these folks work with entrepreneurs, right? They support us with having a business plan. They support us with getting our finances in order so we can get, you know, capital and get loans. They support with marketing ideas. They support with digital marketing. And in fact, they've helped a lot of us businesses at this time during COVID to pivot our businesses and go for PPP funds. So helping a lot of businesses at this point really stay afloat. And as we know in the news, it's something like one in five, almost one in four businesses are closing right now because of the coronavirus and the pandemic. So what is a resource finder? This project is really pulling together all of the resources in one space. A lot of this typically is word of mouth, and so as a business owner, we don't have a lot of time to do this research, let's say. And so we're working a lot in our business, and sometimes we're working on our business, but we really need support. So that's what this is. That's what Blueprint East Hampton is. So, and the idea really long term is supporting our existing businesses, but also really being an attractive place for enterprise to come to the city. So with that, I will share my screen. And, oh, there it is. I'll share the right screen. Just kidding. And here is our fancy website that was created by Source Link. And really, what you're seeing is the page, and this gives some background, this gives some background to the project. And it's a beautiful picture by Pat Bruff of our beautiful promenade there. And then we'll go into the resource navigator. And then you can search below. So what I'm going to do is I want to put in, I'm just learning this myself, by the way, this is brand spanking new. So I wanted to search, so here are some of our resource partners. Let's go on to East Hampton City Arts. And so what you'll see is that kind of talks a little bit about the resource partner. I hope I didn't do anything here. Oh my gosh, I think I, can you all hear me?
Yeah.
And the internet might be out. I don't know, everybody's on the internet right now. I'm sure you guys are. Again, I apologize. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so we're going to go back. And we're going to go down to East Hampton City Arts. So in any case, you'll see the resource partners listed here. And can you, hold on one second. Here we go. So it gives a little background, talks about who East Hampton City, excuse me, East Hampton City Arts is, and kind of the services they provide. And there's the ability to go to their website here, and then there's also the contact information, so you can contact the organization. So the awesome news is that we have 31 partners here. And the mayor and I were on a call, I'm going to stop my share, I will put, the website is blueprinteasthampton.com, so you can all go and check that out. There we go. Can everyone hear me okay?
Wait, is it live?
Yes, I can hear you.
Oh my goodness.
I can hear you fine, Casey.
Thank you. I know that I'm being, I know this is a public meeting and I'm being filmed. I want to yell at my children because they're yelling right now.
I can't hear them.
We can hear you.
If that makes you feel any better.
Do you know how to stop the share, Casey?
Oh my goodness, something's happening.
Stop the share, is that what you're trying to do?
I'm trying to stop the share. Can you take away my sharing privileges here? It's always fine until I have to do something important, right? Like, everybody's quiet until I have to.
There you go.
Hi. So we have 31 resource partners. We were on a meeting earlier today with many other communities and cities that have a similar thing that we're doing here. I was actually impressed that some had 20, and we have 31 for our small little area, which is, it's a lot, and so what this is. Can you hear me? I am so sorry, I think that many people are on the internet. I'm going to leave it at that, because I know you have to get on to something else. Please reach out to me, kcorsello@easthamptonmas.gov. I, K Corsello, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to sit and talk with anyone about it, given the time constraints and that everyone in my family is on the internet right now. I'm going to leave it at that, but this is a wonderful project, and the mayor has, just, her vision is amazing, and as a business owner myself, it's such a valuable resource to have. So this has been a wonderful thing to work on.
Great, thank you, Casey, so much, and, you know, talk to your children. No, but I know how hard you've worked on it, the mayor have worked on it, and certainly, you know, you can come back as you move through this, we would be very happy to have you back at any point in time, but that was really what we wanted. We wanted the introduction and kind of what it is in case people hear about it, so much appreciated, thank you.
Thank you so much.
And with that, I will take a motion to open the public hearings.
Oh, moved.
Motion and a second to open the public hearings. Any discussion? Seeing none, Barbara?
Peggy Coniff?
Yes.
Salem Derby?
Yes.
Erica Flood?
Yes.
Omar Gomez?
Yes.
JP Kozinski?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Yes.
Dan Rist?
Yes.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Yes.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Motion passes. The public hearings are now open. We have four items to discuss in the public hearing. First one is the FY 2021 Tax Classification, Counselor Rist.
Thank you, Madam President. The 21 tax classification is the same as it probably has always been. There have been no changes as long as I've been a counselor that I can recall. The major factor of one means that all classes of property will have a single tax rate. Some cities and towns have a separate tax rate, a higher tax rate for businesses. The city of East Hampton has never done so, and everybody pays the same amount. So this is really a formality required by the DOR and the state that we set the tax rate every year. It is an opportunity if we wanted to have two different rates, but we've never done that, and it's, I think it's fair for our businesses. So I have a motion, but we have to let the public in, and any councilors have any questions?
So we'll start with councilors. Do any councilors have any questions? Anyone from the public have any questions on the 2021 tax classification? It's kind of dry from a discussion perspective. It doesn't say anything about the actual taxes that we will pay, it's just how they will be categorized and classified. Everybody will be classified the same, is really what it is. I don't see any hands raised, so do you want to make a motion, Dan?
I move that the city of East Hampton set a factor of one for the fiscal year 2021 tax rate, keeping a single tax rate for all classes of property, and to not grant an open space discount, nor a residential exemption, nor a small commercial exemption as recommended by the Board of Assessors.
Second.
Motion and a second to set the tax classification factor to one for all classes. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Salem Derby?
Hi.
Erica Flood?
Upstain.
Omar Gomez?
Hi.
JP Kozinski?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Hi.
Dan Rist?
Hi.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Hi.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Peggy Coniff?
Yes. Motion passes.
Moving on to supplemental appropriations, Madam President?
Please.
The first supplemental appropriation is $135,000 from free cash for the fire department overtime account. This is to make the account whole. It was not fully budgeted, as were many accounts by the mayor back in June with budget uncertainty, but now because of the availability of free cash and more budget certainty, the mayor is making whole some underfunded budgets. This amount will make the total the same spending as last year. We had a very nice presentation at the Finance Committee meeting from our chief, Chris Knott, and it detailed in depth how hours are used by the firemen, by the fire personnel, and how overtime is accrued. The one thing that was questioned, and it was very enlightening, is does the West Hampton contract in which we do ambulance services to West Hampton cause overtime to be higher than we're paying? And actually, that entire contract is fairly lucrative. We actually make money. He showed a chart that the cost of overtime for West Hampton is around $24,000, and the contract alone pays $25,000 from West Hampton to use that ambulance service. And then on top of that, we get the fees for every run. So the chief is here if there's any questions, but the Finance Committee approved this.
Are there any questions from any councilors on the overtime for the fire department? Any comments from either the chief or anyone from the public? And seeing none, Counselor Rist?
Before I start, I just want to thank you, Chris, for a great presentation and keep up the good work, because if you give us that kind of information, it's easy to understand. Thank you. I move that the school council approve a supplemental appropriation of $135,000 to be transferred from free cash, to be transferred to the fire department overtime account, $135,000. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose. These funds will be used to cover contractual overtime for shift staffing through June 30th, 2021.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the overtime funds for fire department. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Erica Flood?
Yes.
Omar Gomez?
Hi.
JP Kozinski?
Hi.
Tom Peak? Dan Rist?
Hi.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Hi.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Peggy Coniff?
Yes.
Salem Derby?
Hi.
Motion passes. Counselor Rist?
The next two items, the next three items deal with the Mount Tom North Trailhead Park, which we already received a grant of $374,000. And as required, the CPA approved unanimously a grant of $176,000, which would match that, which is a match. There's also a $9,000, $9,850 Trailhead Park Historic Survey, which I'll explain later. As required by the park grant, sorry, the park grant law, we are required to put $374,000 aside to fund the project as the park grant is reimbursable. In other words, when we submit a bill, having spent money on it, the money goes back into the capital stabilization account, which I was happy to hear, it doesn't just become free cash or back to general fund. The auditor told us that it would go directly into the account. So as we spend the money, or when we submit a bill, we get the money back. But that's required of the grant. Also, there's a resolution, which I'll read at the end, and I'll share the screen because that was a last-minute thing, but apparently the law also requires a resolution to be approved by the council, which does everything that the two appropriations do. So I'm ready to answer any questions, or Jeff Bag is here if there's any from you. All of this was approved twice by the CPA unanimously, and we also, the council might remember, we paid for the entire, this entire open space use is what the CPA is for. We protect open space, and we are providing an accessible trail where handicapped persons can use a trail, get some great views, and there's a link to the whole Mount Tom Trail system. So it's just wonderful, and these appropriations and grants pay for the entire thing, so.
Counselor Peak, but before you say anything, for members of the public, from time to time, I will be turning off your video, don't take it personally, it's just too hard to navigate when I see all your beautiful faces in front of me, so I just want to let you guys know that I'll be doing that from time to time. Go ahead, Counselor Peak.
Yeah, I just, I think I understand this, but I just want to make sure I do because it's a reasonably large sum of money. The idea is that it's reimbursable, so we transfer the money from capital stabilization to this account, and then as we spend money out of this account, the state then reimburses us back into capital stabilization.
That's correct.
In the long run, we'll be spending these other two items, but the $374 will go back to capital stabilization.
That is correct.
Get there for now, so that we can spend it and then get reimbursed for it.
I guess they want to make sure we're actually going to do it. Val, you have, Val has an answer for you.
Sorry, yeah, I just wanted to make it a little bit more clear. What happens is they spend it, we get reimbursed, and then you will have to vote it back to capital stabilization, the same way you voted it from capital into the grant. But yes, you can vote it directly back into the stabilization account as soon as we receive the grant money. And it's only because we had to show that we're funding the project in order to get the grant.
Okay, yeah, great, that makes sense, thanks.
And what I like about that is it doesn't go to free cash, and the next year, we have to move it back in. It can be voted by the council right into capital stabilization when we receive the grant fund, which I like the one. Any other questions? Jeff Bag is here too. Counselor Zaret? Sorry, Paige.
Go for it.
Did the president recognize me?
I did, I recognized you the minute you logged in this evening.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for this project, I'm really excited about it. I just always ask this question when we're appropriating CPA funds, I just like to know what our balance is right now, or what the balance would be after these appropriations would be made, or approximately.
$1,400,000, I believe. I can really go in and get the figure, and I apologize, I could have had that ready for you, but I don't right now. Do you need the exact amount? But it's over $1 million after this, and it even includes the money that we still haven't gotten to the city council for mountain bike park, which we're looking at, mountain bike trails, one of Salem's great projects. But even after that, it's over $1 million, it's still in the kitty.
Thank you.
Does anyone from the public have any comment? Not seeing any. Dan, you want to make a motion?
I'm going to make two supplemental appropriation motions, and then I'm going to read a resolution I'm required by the park grant to read. The first supplemental appropriation, the amount requested, I move that we approve is $374,000 from Capital Stabilization Fund 85, $374,000, to the Mount Tom Trailhead Park Development, $374,000, for the following purpose, to show availability of funds to obtain state park grant funding for the development of the Mount Tom Trailhead Park in the amount of $374,000, to be reimbursed by a state park grant funding for the final design, construction, drawings, and construction of a new accessible trail. drawings, and construction of a new accessible trail, trailhead parking area, hiking trail loop and gathering area at the Mount Tom North Trailhead Park, consisting of approximately 12 acre parcel owned by the City of East Hampton. Book 13301, page 12.
Second.
Motion and a second to move the $374,000 from capitalization to the Mount Tom Trailhead Park Development Fund. Any further discussion?
It was approved 3 to 0 by Finance, but we've got to play it.
Any further discussion? Okay, Barbara.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Tom Peak? We can't hear you, but we assume it's an aye.
I saw his mouth move. Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Yes.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Erica Flood?
Yes.
Motion passes.
The next supplemental appropriation request, I move that we approve it from the Community Preservation Act. The amount requested is $176,000, to be appropriated to, I'm sorry, to be appropriated from the CPA Reserve for Open Space, $75,000, and from the CPA Undesignated Fund, $101,000. The total is $176,000, to be appropriated to the Mount Tom Trailhead Park Construction for the purpose of the city's share of the final design, construction drawings, construction of a new accessible trail, trailhead parking area, hiking trail loop, and gathering area at the Mount Tom North Trailhead Park, consisting of approximately 12 acre parcel owned by the City of East Hampton. Book 13301, page 12.
Second.
Motion a second to approve the funding for the final design and construction of the Mount Tom North Trailhead Park. Any further discussion? Barbara?
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Yes.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Erica Flood?
Yes.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Now I will share the screen, so you can see the resolution that was sent to us today. This resolution is required by the park grant. I'll read it. Park, Mount Tom North Trailhead Park Project, City Council Resolution, a resolution to file and accept grants with and from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs for the Parkland Acquisition and Renovations for Communities Program to Create the Mount Tom North Trailhead Park, whereas the Mount Tom North Trailhead Park, park or project, will become a community-wide asset and will provide public access to protected open space in the City of East Hampton, as outlined in both the City's Master Plan and Open Space Recreation Plan, whereas the Commonwealth's Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs has awarded the city a $374,000 reimbursable grant to support the preservation and restoration of urban parks through the Parkland Acquisition and Renovations for Communities Grant Program 301 CMR 5, the park grant, whereas the park is dedicated to park and recreation purposes under MGL Chapter 45, Section 3, and the city is working to complete the improvements identified in the report prepared by Gottson and Flinker dated July 10, 2020, on a 12 acre city all in parcel, the deed to which is recorded in the Hampshire County Registered Deeds Book 13301, page 12. Whereas to meet said appropriation, with funds transferred to file in accordance with MGL Chapter 293, the Community Preservation Act, and to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the City Council and the mayor, to issue any bonds or notes that may be necessary for that purpose, as authorized by MGL Chapter 44, or any such other enabling authority, whereas it is necessary that the City Council President and City Planner be authorized to file on behalf of the city, any and all applications deemed necessary under Park Act, or any other applications for funds in any way connected with the scope of this project. Whereas the project will cost a total of $500,000, $550,000, of which the city share appropriate $374,000 and no $100, from Capital Stabilization Fund 85, $374,000, to be reimbursed by the park grant, with the remaining $176,000 and no $100, having been allocated from the City's Community Preservation Act funds. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor, the City Council President, and/or the city planner authorize to file on behalf of the city, and all applications necessary under the Park Act, and to file any other applications for funds in any way connected to the project, and that the mayor, and her designated, be and is authorized to file and accept grants from the EEA or any other source relative to the project included but not limited to the park grant collectively grants, and that the mayor or her designated be and is hereby authorized to take such other action as are reasonably necessary to carry out the purpose and conditions of such grants, and that the planning department, parks and recreation department, and other city officials as necessary, are authorized to administer such grants, and that the treasurer with the approval of the City Council and Mayor is hereby authorized to issue any bonds or notes, or to appropriate up to $374,000 from Capital Stabilization Fund 85, and as necessary to the project. This resolution shall take effect upon passage. I move that the City Council approve this resolution.
Second.
Second.
Motion second to approve the resolution for the Mount Tom Trailhead Park. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Erica Flood?
Yes.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So the next thing, Madam President, is the mayor's salary. Shall I move on?
Counselor Rist, do you have to do, or did I?
Oh, my, I'm sorry, yes, the $9,850, my apologies, I skipped right over it. Related to this is an appropriation from the CPA for historic survey, mostly to find out if there's Native American artifacts or other historic artifacts in this area. I'd like Jeff to explain this a little further. The CPA approved this, I don't remember, Jeff, why it's necessary, but I don't think it's required by the park grant, but it's required, correct? Jeff, if you would explain it to the City Council.
Sure, thank you. As part of the process of applying for the park grant, it gets transmitted to other state agencies and Mass Historic Commission. It's the state's historic commission, and looks at projects like this, flagged the project as being close to or potentially, you know, in proximity to cultural resource areas, so there's maps for that. And, you know, I proactively engaged a consultant to help with this project, because it's really important, and this funding is great, and the timing of this is perfect, because the contractor, sorry, the consultant is poised to go out as soon as they get the final permit from Mass Historic to begin the survey work, and they need to evaluate the locations of the parking area and the proposed path route, as well as the area where it's going to be the gathering area at the top of the hill. They assess, they take test pits and they explore to make sure that there's no artifacts in the route of these improvements. And the reason why it's so critical is because we want to get this step done, so that the final construction drawings can move forward over the winter. So that's why we really front-loaded this, before we even knew we got the park grant, we were going to do this. So the funding is really helpful, just to secure the funding now. I will just quickly say that if all goes well, the consultant should be getting the permit within a matter of a week. It's been applied for 40 days. And I just was saying that because, you know, I don't always have the best way to get in touch with people, but there will be survey crews out there in the near future, and so I will use Facebook to get the word out, so that people will start to see some activity, and this is what they'll see. It could happen as quickly as a week from now, so, Mr. Rist, I hope that clarifies it a little bit.
Thank you. I just needed my memory to be recalled. Any questions from the council on the historic survey?
Any questions from the public? Not seeing any. Counselor Rist?
I move that the council approve a supplemental appropriation request from the Community Preservation Act. The amount is $9,850, to be appropriated from the CPA Reserve for Historic Preservation, $9,850, to be appropriated to the Mount Tom Trailhead Park Historic Survey Account, $9,850, for the following purpose: To provide funding for a consultant to conduct an intensive locational historic survey of the Mount Tom North Trailhead Park site.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve funding for a consultant to conduct a historic survey of Mount Thomas North Trailhead Park. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Erica Flood?
Yes.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, Counselor Rist?
Finally, the Finance Committee met and approved a phased increase in the mayoral salary, which we discussed extensively last meeting. I won't get into all the details again, or the merit that I feel for this. I will read from my report, but I want to say at the outset, again, that this salary increase will be for the next mayor, has nothing to do with the current mayor, and the current mayor had nothing to do with this request, did not participate in the discussions, nor did she request this salary increase. This was our request initiated in the Finance Committee and brought to the council from the Finance Committee. It is a legislative action required by the Charter that we do review all salaries and stipends. The Finance Committee did approve 3 to 0, phased-in increase, $82,000 effective January 2, 2022, $84,000 effective January 1, 2023, $87,000 effective January 1, 2024, $90,000 effective January 1, 2025. The City Attorney confirmed his opinion given last August that a phased-in approach for the mayoral salary was allowed in the Charter, so long as it starts with the beginning of the new term for the next mayor, January 2, 2022. Given the four-year terms of the mayor, a future council can use this phased-in increase approach of a smaller amount to provide some kind of color relief to this full-time position, so it's a precedent-setting idea. The approach also lessens the impact of the budgets for the fiscal years during the next term, and lesses the impact for the 2021 and 2022 fiscal years for all increases. The committee chose to make the first increase last $2,000 in the two subsequent years to allow for the budget to recover from current uncertainty. The final increase of $90,000 is in effect for only 2025. Again, I'd like to thank Counselor Kozinski for initiating this. We had thought of it, I'm glad you brought it up, because it's a good way to get this done, and again, it was approved by the full Finance Committee 3 to 0.
Counselor Rist, I just want to make a comment on your last bullet here, where it says the final increase is in effect for only one year. It's actually, it's in effect for that year going forward.
Oh, yeah.
Till it's changed.
For the next term, it's only one year, my apologies, that is.
Yeah, I just want to make sure everyone understood.
It always will be $90,000 unless it's changed by the next council.
Right. Okay. Any questions from the council? Any, oh, I'm sorry, Counselor P, Counselor Kozinski?
Not a question, but just a comment, I really appreciate the council taking this one, and the Finance Committee coming back with a positive recommendation. I think it's reasonable, sensible, balanced, and measured. I think it puts us on a good footing for the future, and I think it's a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any comments from the public? Seeing none? Dan, you want to make, did you make a motion?
Yep. I move that the City Council adopt, under Articlet 2, elected officials an ordinance on Section 216, mayoral salary, in accordance with the Home, which reads, "In accordance with the Home Real Charter, Chapter 3, Section 3-1C, and Chapter 9, Section 9-6I2, the annual salary of the mayor of East Hampton shall be $82,000 effective January 2, 2022, $84,000 effective January 1, 2023, $87,000 effective January 1, 2024, and $90,000 effective January 1, 2025."
Second.
Motion second to make modifications to the mayoral salary as just outlined. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Erica Flood?
Yes.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Motion passes.
I am done, Madam President.
All right, moving on to zoning ordinance amendment. Counselor Derby?
Thank you, Madam President. So we have a continued public hearing on the potential change of allowing new construction for cannabis and highway business. We discussed this, I believe, not last meeting, but the meeting before. We have, the ordinance committee has met twice since then, to review potential changes and ways to mitigate this, and I think, well, we have the city planner here, and I do have a little presentation that I would like to be able to put up. I don't know if, Jeff, you want to say anything before I do that, or if you want to go after me? And maybe if you go after me, you might be able to correct anything that I got wrong. And so I'm going to go ahead and share my screen here really quickly, so just give me one second. Counselor Derby, the only question I have, before you start, is, are you aware that the city solicitor has reviewed the version, and has, there have been some changes? Are you aware of that, part of that?
I am aware of that, and basically, other than a couple of wording changes, the significant one was about the decommissioning, is that?
Yes.
But maybe we can review that?
Yeah, that's fine, I just wanted to make sure you were aware of that, that's all. I'll go after you, thank you.
Okay. And so, you know, this has taken up a lot of the ordinance committee's time, you know, it's a complicated issue, and I think that there are some nuances here, and I'm hoping that I can kind of help people understand these as we move along, and hopefully clarify some things. If people have any questions, I'd be happy to address those from the council. You know, so basically, the issue is whether to allow new construction for cannabis cultivation and highway business zone. Currently, it is allowed, I want to repeat that again, it is allowed, right now, to grow cannabis in the highway business zone, even as a standalone. You can grow it without a retail business in the highway business, but it has to be in an existing building, so you can see the existing language there. You know, so I know that there was a lot of, you know, there was petitions going around and whatnot, talking about odor and noise, and that's going to be a problem. But, you know, right now it's allowed, and it's allowed in existing buildings, so I wanted just to make that really clear. And you can probably hear who's calling me right now. So I'll keep going. So the process was basically, the planner asked us to look at this, we had originally talked about this when we addressed recreational cannabis in 2018, and this issue was put on the back burner. One of the concerns was that massive grow structures would be placed in, you know, just randomly placed for, you know, companies to grow cannabis, and there wouldn't be much thought around it, so we wanted to, we put the in-existing building caveat in. And at the time, it seemed like it made a lot of sense, but as the field kind of opened, and we saw exactly what it looked like with recreational cannabis rolling out, it seemed like that was not actually happening. So we did hold two public, joint public hearings with the planning board. The planning board did send us recommendations, and the planning board did pass this on to the ordinance subcommittee. This is something that has been in our committee for eight months, and we have discussed this from, you know, basically, the original discussion was, do we just take HB out, to what we ended up with, which is- To what we ended up with, which is, I feel like, a very complete and well-thought-out proposal that mitigates a lot of the potential concerns. And so we did have many individuals give input, from butters to, you know, business owners and members of the planning board. And we discussed this as a committee many times, and really tried to parse out what we could do to mitigate potential impacts. And so what are the, what, what could the city potentially gain from passing this? You know, so, you know, as we all know, as city councillors, new growth is an important thing to think about. It's not the only thing to think about, but it is important to think about new growth and expanding the tax base. And we do have parcels in our highway business zone, which is, which are designed to catch our bigger retail and, and commercial enterprises that are empty. This also gives us a lot more control. So the restrictions that we put in place mitigate a lot of the impacts to the surrounding neighborhoods, to the zone. And that was something that we really were focused on. And it also allows for development using the newest and most efficient technology. You know, I know, one of the things that was said multiple times was, people were concerned about smell. Well, if you build a new building, you're going to be able to mitigate smell very, very effectively compared to retrofitting an old building, which has, you know, potential gaps and whatnot. So I think that's an important thing, and also efficiency, you know, as we move forward, thinking about efficiency. And it's not just efficiency from the energy standpoint, which I think is important, but also efficiency streamlining from the production to the retail sales. If you have that in one location, it's, you know, it's similar to our breweries that we have in town, where they, they brew their own beer, and they are able to sell it on-site, which, you know, they don't have to ship it. So I think that's a potential benefit. So let's go over exactly what is changing. And so one of the things, this was recommended from the planning board, was that the, any new construction for cannabis cultivation would have to be in a planned business development. And so what that does is it gives the planning board more control over the way, the way that it's planned. There are additional barriers that the, the company would have to meet in order to meet the criteria for a planned business development. So that's one of the first things that came out of the planning board, the joint meetings with the planning board. So the next part was retail. This also came out of the, our meetings with the planning board, which would require a retail component to any new cultivation facility, which means, since it's in highway business, it makes a lot of sense to have a retail store attached to the cultivation because it is highway business, which is for, technically, even though we have a lot of mixed uses in highway business, but it is the place that is supposed to catch our commercial and retail, you know, areas in that, for that spot. So this would require any new cultivation facility to have retail component. So, and I grouped these together, and I apologize, I could have done this much better, but I ended up having to spend a couple hours helping my daughter on a history project, so I didn't quite have the time to really polish this. So I apologize. But, so here are some of the things that we came up with in committee. So basically, as we were going through this process over the last eight months, about halfway through, it came to our attention that there was another development going into the highway business in proximity to, you know, what could potentially be a project. And so originally, that, that company was going to be near the Southampton border. That changed, and about halfway through, we, we found that out. And so we were put in a very difficult position of potentially playing favorites. You know, so what we wanted to do is we wanted to try to level that playing field. So part of that would be allowing this to be exempt from the two-hundred-foot buffer between cannabis facilities that is in downtown business, which makes a lot of sense there. In highway business, it is, doesn't necessarily make as much sense, since it's such a large area. So that's one of the things that we came up with. Now, we also, originally, it was a five-acre parcel size. In order to allow this to be potentially applicable to more spots in the zone, we decided to lower that to a three-acre minimum size. Still be planned business development, but it would have to, and by the way, in a planned business development, if you were doing another, if you were doing another type of operation as a planned business development, that threshold is three acres. So it just brings it in line. And so then, we also came up with, buildings should have a front setback of a hundred feet, and that was basically, you know, to keep it a little bit further back from the road. And Jeff will explain that, I'm sure, when he comes in, the rationale for that, but I'm going to keep moving on. So this one is important, and this is one that the, the committee put in as a response. And, and let's be clear, if, if you are a neighbor of this zone, it puts you in a difficult position because it's a residential zone bumping up against the highway business zone, which is where our commercial and retail is designed to go. And in that zone, could go many, many things, from grocery stores to car dealerships, to gas stations, et cetera. And so what we wanted to do, and this is something that we talked about going back, and not doing it just for cannabis, but maybe looking at other things as well, but creating a hundred-and-fifty-foot setback between the property line of the nearest residential neighbor and the cultivation facility. Now, that's more than triple any other setback in our entire zoning. It's significant. So it's, this is not something that's done lightly. This is a significant setback that is, does not exist anywhere else in the zoning. And we also included a fifty-foot vegetative buffer, which would go between the residential zone and this commercial property. And so those are things that we tried to include to mitigate the potential impact to neighbors. Now, these are some more, and bear with me, I know this is a lot, but this has taken us eight months. So one of the things that was, that we felt strongly about as a committee, I think, is that these, the building would not exceed twenty-five thousand square feet gross. That's total. So you can't, you wouldn't have a twenty-five thousand square foot cultivation facility that was three stories high. That would not happen. That couldn't happen because of this. So what you could have is you could have a twenty-five thousand square foot that's one story high. And in a, we're talking about protecting view sheds, I think that's important, is this would prevent any sort of multi-layered building that would be a giant footprint, or this also prevents multiple cultivation buildings. Originally, it could have been, you could have put three twenty-five thousand square foot buildings. With this provision, it limits the total grow area to twenty-five thousand square feet. I think that's important. And then, we also included something for people that, you know, it's important to reuse old buildings, and, and I, I didn't mean to be glib when I said that a new building would control odor better. I think that you could probably retrofit an old building fine, and, and might be more difficult, but I think that's an important thing. We saw the use of the old mills amazing, right? But, so we didn't want to punish people that were going to reuse existing buildings. So we allowed them to expand under this, up to twenty-five thousand square feet. And also, that would reduce the amount of property that they would need to have, and put that at the discretion of the planning board. And so that would allow someone who maybe was using an existing building, decided they needed to grow, they could expand up to twenty-five thousand square feet, but if they didn't have the acreage, they could ask the planning board and get approval. And then finally, one of the most important parts is the decommissioning part, because a lot of people were concerned that one of these buildings might not be that reusable. And so this would require a bond in the event that the business is no longer functional or viable, and it would be a decommissioning bond that would cover the cost of removal of the building. And so, let me, I just want to just be clear about what this is not going to do. So this, this proposed change is not going to allow, it will not allow for large-scale construction in highway business. Like I said, it's limited to twenty-five thousand square feet. Right now, in highway business, for other types of buildings, the limit, the cap is fifty thousand square feet. So this would cut in half, and even more, if you talked about multi-story buildings, you know, how much you could build in highway business. So this proposed ordinance change would not guarantee a project on any parcel in the highway business zone. We don't know what's going to happen. We don't know, and, and we can't know, because we can't see into the future what projects are going to succeed, what projects are going to fail, what projects are going to come to completion, which ones are not. So this does not guarantee anything. It just allows the framework to be put in place. This is not going to significantly change the character of the business zone. The businesses are highly regularly, cannabis businesses are highly regulated as to what they can advertise and how they can look. Perfect example is Liberty on, in the highway business, on, you know, Route ten, right there. Most people don't even know what it is when they drive by. So it's not like you're going to drive into town and be like, oh, look at all these cannabis facilities, because you kind of won't know what they are unless you know what they are. And this would not encourage a dangerous manufacturing facility. Some of the things, some of the information that was put out was saying, you know, that there's dangerous gases, and there's explosions, and, and, you know, it sounded scary. And I just want you to know that I did a decent amount of research, and in Massachusetts, we have had zero industrial accidents in cannabis grow facilities. There was one fire at a Neta grow facility that was put out very quickly, but there was, there was no explosions, there was no dangerous gases being released. So I just wanted to put that out there. There has not been one recorded incident. Again, this is super highly regulated. And so that, that's not something that is a reality. And this doesn't change the fact that it's already allowed in existing buildings. So if we do nothing, it's still allowed in existing buildings, and I would, I don't think, and Jeff can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think there's anything that would stop those existing buildings from expanding unregulated that's currently in the zoning. But I, I might be wrong, but anyway. And this will not prevent another large development of up to fifty thousand square feet from being built in highway business. So large car dealerships, large grocery stores, large liquor stores, large retail and box stores, and none of which would be subject to any requirements other than the fifty thousand square foot cap and the, and thirty to thirty-five foot setbacks. That's it. Obviously, they'd have to get special permits, but, so that kind of concludes my, my quick review. Just to, to full disclosure, this passed committee two to one. And that being said, you know, I'm happy to, to turn the floor over to Owen, if you would like to do a minority report, or I can pass it over to Jeff, you know, to kind of clear up any places where I wasn't as clear as I should have been.
Council Zerret, you want to provide a minority report?
If you don't mind, may I go after the planner?
Sure.
Okay.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Thank you. I really appreciate Council Derby taking that on, and that was a fantastic overview of the past eight months, so I, I appreciate that. Just really minor notes, I suppose, just for total transparency. The, the one thing that I think, I just wanted to be clear, is with the twenty-five thousand square foot growth, I think you described it very accurately. You know, our, our point of reference right now is, is River Valley Co-op is, is a twenty-three thousand square foot building. So it, that's a one-story, that's, that's kind of the maximum growths you would see for one story. The one thing is that I believe, the way it is written right now, is that you could have two smaller buildings, as long as the cumulative growth square footage doesn't go over twenty-five thousand. So, and that's all kind of relative to all the other things that are, are the comparables. So I, there, there is, there is a chance that someone would choose to do two ten-thousand square foot buildings. The trend seems to be one-story. There really doesn't, anecdotally, there doesn't seem to be a lot of cultivation facilities that are going multiple stories. But, so you could do two buildings at ten thousand square foot, and that would be within the realm of possibility. The only other thing, for people who have been, you know, attending some of the meetings, the last one, there was a conversation about the highway business district on East Street. It's very disjointed, it's completely separate from what most of the discussions have been for, for the majority of the discussion on Route ten. So the discussion was to exclude East Street from this, and when the city attorney was reviewing it, he said, we really can't do that. There's, you know, some expectation that there's uniformity within a district. So the, the good, I think the, the important information for, for that part is, there's a very small area on East Street that is zone highway business, but when you factor, and so, so I think as Council Derby said, in an existing building, that could happen today. There's not a lot of commercial buildings in that, in that small area, but that's important to know that it could happen today in an existing building. For, for new buildings, the, the structure right now is that it would have to be one hundred feet from the public way, so it would have to be one hundred feet from East Street, and it would have to be on a parcel that starts at three acres. So those are kind of very hard and fast requirements that, when you look at some maps of East Street, it's just, it's just not realistic that this, that this use would go there. And then the final part of that is that, as you tie it to retail, you know, we, we have a finite number of retail licenses available, and so the expectation is that there's, there's not a lot of expectation that this is going to have this ripple effect where all of a sudden, we're going to get inundated, because there's not that many retail establishment licenses left. So those were really the only kind of clarifying things I just wanted to add, and then, you know, I'm here for additional questions as they come up.
Council Zerret, did you want to go now?
Sure, thank you. Yeah, and first of all, just thank you, everybody, to participated in these discussions. As Council Derby indicated, this was a long haul, eight months. The, what you have in front of you, as you all know, is significantly different than what was presented in the original submission to the council, which has been one of my concerns all along, and which I'll delve into a little bit. I did feel that during this process, we had language appear that was not submitted through agenda, and not really deliberated through the meeting process, so that has concerned me. And there were some other procedural issues which I'm concerned about, but that's not really the, the basis of my report. But I do appreciate all the work that the planners gone into, and the planning board, and the ordinance committee, as well as really great engagement from members of the public, and frankly, I wish that we saw more of that. So my question during this entire process has been why? Why now? Why after approximately two years ago, two and a half years ago, since we wrote this ordinance, and made a decision as to how we wanted to manage new cultivation businesses in the highway business district? Was this suddenly a pressing issue? And frankly, during the proceedings, it never really became clear to me why this amendment was necessary now. We currently have two retail cannabis businesses in the highway business district, Liberty and Herbology, and it's not a secret that another business is applying for a special permit. I think they may or may not have already had a preliminary hearing and held a community information meeting. So it's not difficult to find space for cannabis retail in the highway business district, and potentially, it might not be difficult to find space for cultivation. We have two businesses operating in the highway business district. Both Liberty currently, and I'm sorry, then we have another business in town, Herb is the Verb, and neither of them, it seems to be important to them to be co-located with cultivation. When we wrote the ordinance a little over two years ago, and President Coniff, you were there, and Council Derby, you were there as well, we laid out language to provide a thoughtful framework to allow cannabis to grow organically, no pun intended. So items like the two-hundred-foot buffer were important and were placed in the language in order to allow businesses to be spaced out and to grow and succeed. At the same time, we rejected or minimized other items like school buffers, because we did not feel like they were actually necessary or provided any sort of function, and frankly, only promoted stigma. Our four current special permit holders all were constrained by the language of the current ordinance. And part of the brilliance of the current ordinance is that it fosters reuse of buildings, which is one of the, I think, hallmarks and foundations of our city. I feel that this amendment's unfair, because the current business owners would provide a certain set of rules to play by, and now we see the rules changing for at least one or two of the final six special permits that were initially allowed. And not to be a downer, but we're in an economic downturn, and we're unfortunately likely to see more empty storefronts in our lovely city, and more empty buildings. And is it really our prerogative right now to focus on new construction in the city specifically for this industry, when we've seen so much success with reuse of buildings? And think about, thinking about, proactively about our current building owners, our current landlords, who are going to need tenants sooner rather than later, as unfortunately, COVID kills businesses? During the process of this deliberations, I desperately wanted to see how this encompassed the entire highway business district. But all I kept hearing about was the parcel on North Hampton Street that contained Tasty Top, over and over. And oddly even more, was discussion about occupied parcel across the street that has a current building on it that housed the former Cernac Buick. And even now, with two special business permits available, And even now with two special business permits available, maybe even only one available. I'm not sure what the current process is for one of them. We're talking about this as if this is going to apply broadly to the highway business district, which in fact it's not. It's going to benefit a single, maybe two special permits. So this also brings up an important, at least feeling for me, and I can only speak for myself. But I feel that zoning should be agnostic. It should be mostly blind. It should apply broadly to a topic of use and land use and really try to ignore for the most part, businesses or specific entities. Now, now and then you, you run into things where you might end up edging someone out because you create zoning that's unfair. And so I think with all fairness, you could say, maybe you keep at least one eye open when you're dealing with this. But we have to be careful about how much we can take, we cater to specific businesses as opposed to talking broadly. And I got lost in the discussion when we weren't really able to divorce ourselves from such a narrow scope. And this was further narrowed for me when we couldn't separate ourselves from the discussion about having to attach retail to new cultivation businesses. If we can currently have a standalone cultivation space in an existing building, why can't we, if you want to talk about new growth, no pun intended, why can't we have cultivation in a new building then if we're going to have this discussion? And while this is not exactly spot zoning, I can see why this topic was brought up in our deliberations. Spot zoning or rezoning, for those who aren't familiar, is rezoning particular parcels as small spots in a zoning map. Um, and while this is not the exact case here, I want to give you a definition. Spot zoning, a provision in a general plan which benefits a single parcel of land by creating a zone for use just for that parcel and different from the surrounding properties in the area. Spot zoning is not favored since it smacks of favoritism and usually annoys neighbors. We heard a lot about that. So we're not creating a new zone, but we're creating very special zoning. And again, that came up over and over in these discussions. So we're not creating a new zone here and, um, we've amended zoning in the past in order to accommodate the needs of other businesses. But I would argue that A, we closed gaps in the zoning that may have, uh, caused issues for these, these other businesses. But B, by creating that language, it could benefit any other business who wanted to come along and do business in the highway business district. I do feel also that to some degree, the majority of our conversations fell into the realm of planning board discussions. We were discussing whether a business could or couldn't participate in a parcel. But, and their, and the merits of their application, but I don't feel, at least in my brief experience, that that's truly a zoning discussion. The language fails to accomplish what it says it's doing in the manner that's curated for a single parcel and a neighboring parcel. As well as relative to the limited number of cannabis retail, uh, special permits, this really creates a special zoning just for one request. Now, if there wasn't a cap or we had more special permits available, I think this wouldn't be as much of an issue. So we ended up with language that, in my opinion, was crafted solely for a really specific parcel that is, in my opinion, messy, contains language that we had shunned previously when we did this, such as these large, um, setbacks from residential, um, residential parcels, as well as some of the setbacks from the street. It's hyper focused and frankly, it's way more complicated than the entirety of our current recreational cannabis ordinance. And all the issues that we thought were, were necessary or unnecessary reflected, reflected NIMBYism and stigma previously were included in this amendment. I feel that eliminating the 200 foot buffer is, it's unnecessary and creates competition. The purpose there was actually to foster growth of our individual businesses. It was to encourage a diversity of districts for cannabis retail. Uh, we talked about this a lot as a means to de-stigmatize the industry. Now we're making it easier for the highway business district to house four of our retail establishments and throwing that mechanism for diversity out the window with multiple elements in this language. Our highway business district is likely to become the cannabis business district or the CBD. I thought I'd throw that in there because I figure you're getting bored of this by now. With more storefronts, uh, likely to open up unfortunately soon on Union Main and Cottage Street, I'd like to prioritize language that's going to favor those landlords and spaces like that. I'd also like to prioritize our current businesses and support them instead of supporting a business that doesn't even exist yet. Prior to this, our most recent amendment to cannabis zoning was equity. We wrote language to allow, to allow black and brown people and other marginalized potential business owners into the industry. We were trying to bring more people in and recognize that this is an industry that caters to people who have a lot and offer something up to the people who didn't have as much and want entrance. And we threw that out. And the irony is that we're talking about a review of ordinance that looks for systemic bias and racism. Well, we'll look no further because we're created, we created language here that is catering specifically to entitled request, to change our zoning to potentially benefit one parcel. In an industry that's dominated by typically rich, rich white men who have a lot of liquid capital, as opposed to the equity applicants that we were trying to make space for. As opposed to equity, which would have opened up the industry to more opportunity that creates inequity. This legislates narrowly to the kind of developers that have everything that economic empowerment and equity applicants don't have. It's an entitlement amendment. And when I pictured cannabis in, in East Hampton, I pictured an industry that was as local as possible and as small as possible. It takes a great deal of capital to open these businesses. But, and yes, all the current businesses have had that money. And I'd like to see them continue to succeed instead of making amendments that offers rules that they didn't have opportunities to zone by. And I'd like to continue the feel of current cannabis in East Hampton by continuing reuse of business and diversifying where these businesses go. East Hampton's opposed to big box stores before I was on the council. And I feel that this amendment opens us up for big box cannabis. Now, I'll say this, if this were three years from now and our special permits were not filled and we still had outlying special permits or we chose at that point to expand, I would totally understand opening up the, the industry to language like this. But within to open just about two years and our two other current special permit holders who are open, being open less than six months, and the other one that has a special permit is not even open, can we give our current businesses more of a chance? So for me, the only way that this would work is if we create language that had this take effect in two years to allow ongoing growth of the industry as it's been growing with the current language in place. And expand the number of permits that are currently available, uh, so that this is not narrowly legislated, seemingly just for a single entity. And by expanding those permits, we should include equity provisions. And frankly, I, if we could currently have standalone cultivation in existing buildings in the highway business district, I don't see the, I don't understand the current language to co-locate retail with this new amendment. But with that, I have all the respect in the world for all the people who participate in this process. My chairman, Mr. Counsel Derby, Counsel Peak, who's also on the committee, Planner Bag. That's my feeling about, that's why I voted no on committee. As you know, I'm a staunch supporter of cannabis industry here and abroad. But that's why I don't feel I could support this right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselors Zaret. Counselor Derby, can I just hear from Counsel Peak and then we'll come back to you?
Yeah, okay. That's perfect.
Since the other committee members have given their, their logic, uh, and mine's a little bit different, I wanted to sort of present it. Mine's, uh, I'll be, I think a bit quicker because my logic here is fairly narrow. I don't believe that zoning is, uh, something that we should ever take as this sort of, um, beautiful and perfect document. If you sat through the meeting about the housing production plan recently, you would hear about all of the problems within our zoning. Beyond that, for a lot of you, we're here when we wrote the cannabis zoning. And I respect all of you, but we're, we're just people and we make mistakes. We've, you know, we've made mistakes before. We'll make more mistakes in the future. I don't take anything that we've written to be some sort of inherent like wisdom passed down in, you know, in some. So when, um, it, when it comes to these things, for me, uh, the thing that I think about a lot is being really, uh, really careful with the power to tell people that they can't do things on their land. Which is really what zoning is. It's the power to tell people that even though they own a property, that there's certain things you can't do on it. And so when somebody who has a property or is interested in buying a property comes to us and says that they would like to do something on that property and that the reason why they can't is a rule that we have control over, like our zoning. I think that it is to actually check whether our restricting them from doing that thing they want to do is warranted. You know, not to, it's a, I understand in all the different ways, this is so different. But you know, uh, last term, we passed, uh, a whole thing about keeping backyard chickens. And it originated in largely the same way that somebody wanted to do something. They realized that they couldn't. They came to us and they said, hey, I want to do this thing and I can't, and I don't think that's right. And that's really what it comes down to is just, I don't think that's, it's right. And so what we did was we looked at the issue of cannabis retail, like sort of like of a cannabis cultivation facility in the highway business. Is it right for us to restrict that? At first I had some, and, and to be honest, I, I, there are still things about the, the project that sparked this that are not, are not crazy about, but that's really not, neither here nor there. I don't believe it's our place to make those kinds of calls. The question that came up to me was simply, is it right to restrict this sort of use in this area? And when I looked at the other sorts of uses that were allowed in this area, I couldn't come up with a valid reason why they should be. It's true that this was the response of a, that this was in response to a request from a well-capitalized out-of-state group. And for what it's worth, a local landowner who wants to sell to that well-capitalized out-of-state group. And, um, it's true that this particular change would be unlikely to affect very many parcels, if any, right? Because that's the other thing, you know, this, we could pass this and it could never affect any parcels. If it does affect any parcels, it's true that given our choice to restrict the number of, um, businesses of this type that can operate in the city at a given time, it's unlikely to, to affect very many of them. And true that because we made the choice to restrict these groups when we initially passed this zoning, which, uh, as a side, I'll just remind, we were on a ticking clock to get that done so that there would be zoning in place once these were allowed. It is true that we, that we restricted other places who might have chosen to do something like this and that's unfair. My question is, should we continue to restrict this use? Is it fair? Does it further some public good for us to restrict this use? At the end of the day, when I look at the other uses that are allowed in the district, it's hard for me to figure out how this is somehow more harmful to the public good than any number of other large projects that could easily go into the parcels in question. And so for me, it's just that simple. If people, you know, I, I've had people who are for this and people who are opposed to this bring up examples of the actual proposed project on the Tasty Top site. For me, I am not comfortable entertaining that in my discussion about this. You can, of course, I'm not telling you how to legislate. But for me, matters, site-specific matters like that are the domain of the planning board. If there's things about this, when it comes down to how it's going to affect the view shed or how it's going, like, like the way that it's going to affect people, I think that that is, that is ultimately, it's down to the planning board to make those site-specific determinations. What we need to decide is, is this use type permitted in the zone? I can't find a good reason why this use type should not be permitted in this zone. I, if, and I, and I, and we've had a lot of these conversations. Now, that being said, oh man, I just lost my train of thought. I didn't actually plan to speak for this long, but I, it would just, uh, I, I guess my point is, you know, I, I also understand that there, you know, one reality of this is that we have a traditionally fairly business-friendly planning board, uh, who, who tends to rule in certain ways on this. And, and that's something, again, that I think is, is a valid thing to, to, to consider when we talk about these things that, you know, just saying, oh, well, go take it up with the planning board is, is not necessarily, uh, like a comforting thing to somebody who has concerns about this isn't a butter because of, you know, they, they tend to be, you know, quite, quite business friendly. But again, like, that's the planning board we have. I don't necessarily feel comfortable telling them, like, like, uh, not permitting a use type that I fundamentally don't disagree with because I'm worried that they might approve a project that might not be the thing I'd want to see on that parcel. It, it, to me, this, it feels like an overreach of our powers. And so, you know, in my very limited, narrow way of looking at this, the one thing that would get me to vote no on this is somebody coming up with a really good reason why, when you look at all the gas stations and fast food restaurants and potentially they have grocery stores and big box retail and all the other things that are allowed in this zone, that specifically this type of use would, shouldn't, should not be allowed. And that's just, when I look at that, I, I find that whatever concerns I might have about this project and the site, I can't find a good reason to exclude this use type from the, from the zone.
Counselor Derby, and did you want to, did you want to say something?
Well, I just wanted to speak really briefly to the, to the process, you know, I, I think, because I think it's important as the chair to, to at least acknowledge, um, the, the idea of spot zoning. And, and I wholeheartedly, uh, disagree with the fact that this is being kind of characterized as spot zoning, 100%. I would, I would agree that the catalyst for this was a, a, a project that the, you know, the, the planner identified this, uh, this lack of clarity in the zoning or lack of fairness, I guess. And that, that was the spark. But as soon as it came to our committee, that was not our, that was not our role. It was not what we did. We did not look to, to make this something specific to one parcel. And in fact, the reason why the discussion was centered around this parcel so frequently within our meetings was because of the people that came to them and the questions that they were asking, which was the direct the butter and the, the business across the street that was looking in to put in a direct competition. So of course we're going to have to address things that are, are, you know, are relative to what they want and need. And, you know, and, and so I just wanted, like, we went so far as to reducing the, the, um, the, um, the size of the lot to three acres, so it would apply to multiple parcels within highway business. And so, and then the 200 foot buffer would then again be something that would, we'd have to entertain because if someone put something next to Cumberland Farms, it would be within 200 feet of the, the parcel that's next to the post office. Or if it was across the street next to, you know, and so what we're talking about is we have a finite number of places where we can put these six permits. You know, uh, as of now, four of them, or three of them are open, four of them are, uh, you know, that last one's closed. We have two outstanding. So we have a finite number of places we can put these. And, and I, I would, you know, I would say that the highway business is an appropriate place to put some of them. If, if not four or, you know, three or four, a, as opposed to having those downtown. And we just don't have that many places to put it. And, and then, you know, I think, um, finally, as far as like giving in to things that we have rejected before as like buffers, you know, zoning and, and the, the legislative process is about compromise. And sometimes you compromise things because they are, um, a way to, to, uh, make things happen that mitigate people being upset over, you're never going to make anybody, everybody happy, but you can mitigate some of the negative impacts. And so, you know, I'm not for buffers. I am not, but I pushed for the buff, the, the 150 foot buffer to try to mitigate. To try to mitigate, because I understand, I can empathize with what it would be like to be a, you know, a landowner adjacent to this. And there are a couple of spots within that zoning that would benefit from that buffer. So, you know, again, it was definitely not spot zoning. And and I reject that characterization. So I just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you, councillor Derby. Councillor Flood.
Um I have a couple of questions and a couple of comments. One question goes back to just talking about the language and what I keep hearing is. This is restricted to a total grow area of 25,000 square feet. And again, and again, and again, it's cultivation, cultivation, cultivation. But what happens to the rest of that parcel? Can they add other things like, for instance, a restaurant or an R and D facility? Is it open to that? That's my first question. So this discussion here is to allow for up to 25,000 square feet for cultivation. But does that still leave the door open for other buildings to be added to the parcel?
Quick answer is yes.
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
My second question, which is maybe rhetorical, but just feeding off of what councillor Peak said, it really does seem to me, I mean. Would this be before the council if there wasn't a very specific applicant who approached? I mean, would would this have come up out of nowhere if somebody hadn't said, I want to do this on this land? Because I that is one of the problems I do have where, yes, we need growth and we need revenue and we need new industry. But I do feel, you know, I abstained from the tax vote earlier today because I don't agree. With having equal burden for businesses and commercial and residential. I I I think that's a mistake, and I think if we want to be business-friendly, then we should also be residentially friendly. And for those of you who think it's equal taxes for everybody. Well, it's also equal safe for those residents are sitting there next to that parcel of land. I'm a bit offended listening to these meetings over a while, and I do respect all the work that's been gone into it. But it's offensive to sit here and listen to this spoken as like it's a broad thing, it's in highway business. When we all know this is for one specific project, it's for one specific applicant. And in some ways, I find that offensive. I think we should be transparent. And we should be clear about, we're trying to make way for this one industry. This isn't gonna be one 25,000-square-foot cultivation. If we open this door, this is a huge campus with R and D buildings, restaurants. Could it be a big bonus to the city? Yes, it'll bring in money, but the way that it has been discussed. Painting broad strokes, I feel that it hasn't been transparent. And not everybody has the time and attention span to attend every meeting over an eight-month span. But I think that we're gonna find some even more upset neighbors when they realize. We're not talking about one big warehouse to grow in, we're talking about. An entire industrial park popping up on that parcel. Um and I just think there's some, it's a little, it's a little disturbing to to pretend. That this is something that it's not, and I would rather see eight months discussion on bringing equity to this industry. Than to cater to somebody from California with a bunch of money. Uh I'm sorry, I'm disturbed by it. I'm not in favor, and that that's a number of the reasons. I think we should be. Way more transparent about the way we're talking about this. And then we can talk about if this is fair and if it's necessary. And would this have been brought to the council if it wasn't for this one applicant? But again, I respect all the work that's gone into looking at this from every angle and the amount of time and energy that everybody's given up to address it.
Thank you, councillor Flood. Um councillor Peak, I'll get to you in a second. I just want to see if any other councillors. Have anything they would like to ask or add to the conversation? Okay, councillor Peak.
Yeah, I just want to respond to a couple of the the points that councillor Flood made, because I think they're important. Yeah, there's no doubt that there's a re- that the the applicant that um. The 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 there's the reason we're talking about this is because an applicant. Ran into a project they wanted to do and they couldn't because of our zoning. For what it's worth, until we appropriate the money to go through our zoning in a comprehensive way and change it. That's how a lot of the conversations around zoning amendments are gonna go. The zoning's fine until it isn't. It's fine until someone wants to do something and then they can't. I think that if somebody wanted to do something and the thing that was standing in their way is is the zoning. Then really the question that we have to look at is, is that rule fair? Is that rule fair, right? Now, at that, when it comes to sort of the site-specific considerations. I believe that the domain for those discussions is the planning board. I I just, I I need to keep saying this. If the planning board decides that for whatever reason they choose not to grant a special permit. To the person, you know, to to the the applicant that sort of spurred this discussion. Or for that matter, if the applicant who spurred this discussion decided that they wanted to go in a different direction or ran out of capital or whatever. This rule would still apply, and that's why it it is and it isn't, right? It is um spurred by a specific applicant in that unless somebody wanted to do this and couldn't, they prob- no one would have brought it up, right? Like, no one's just gonna change zoning. No one's gonna go through the the labor, like laborious process of changing zoning, just like as a hobby. You do it when something isn't working. That being said, like, i- if that if that business were to not materialize, if the planning board were to decide that they don't want to issue. This business a permit, if they decided not to show up, this rule would still apply for the whole district. It could be used for a future business. If at some point the council made the decision to increase the number of licenses that were allowed. Or if a licensee were to go under and a license were to be available, this rule would apply. There's no doubt that it's been spurred by a single person, but this rule is important for the whole district. Because we don't know what the future is going to hold after we do this. The thing that we need to be focusing on, in my opinion, is whether this use type is appropriate for this zone.
Thank you, councillor Peak. Any other councillor Gomez?
Thank you, Madam President. First, I want to say thank you to the ordinance committee for being working with this for eight months. I think uh. There was a lot of discussion, I was for most of the uh in those meetings. And um I hear all the arguments going back and forward, and the the job that you guys was was amazing. Uh but I do have a few questions. The first one is. Right now, with the zoning that we have in place, uh. A applicant, I'm not talking about cannabis now, an applicant that go there now to any of that land and and highway business. Can build um can have a building up to 50,000 square feet, if if that's correct, right? Yeah, okay, that's the first one. The second one is, and councillor Derby was asking about it, and and didn't have the answer from from the city planner Jeff. Uh I I just want to be sure before making any decision. Um and I. In my decision for this, I'm trying to take out of the picture the tasty top parcel. But because uh control Derby says something, I just want to ask. If it is possible, and because they have a huge barn in the back. If someone can buy that property and because that is a 16-building, they can expand it now with with the regulation that we have now. And on of the, how big that can expansion can go.
I I mean, I I think I'll, maybe Jeff, you can help me out with this, but I think under our existing zoning. If um someone buys an existing building and and puts cultivation in there, there's nothing to prevent them from expanding that building, is there? There's nothing that says it in the zoning that says they can't expand it. So they could probably expand it to 50,000 square feet.
I um I think that that's true, I but I think if that is the sole factor that you would decide on, I, you know. There is another read of it, which would be that the zoning says that you can do cultivation in an existing building. Which there's the other side of this is that you would read that it's you are confined to the existing building. So i- if that's the, if that were the sole factor in making your decision, then maybe we should look at that a little more carefully. I think it, I think it's certainly possible. You know, all it takes, it takes some time in making the valid argument. Um I could see how you could arrive at either conclusion, so.
So we probably have to litigate that then.
That, yeah, it it it's a little bit more complicated and it's not exactly straightforward, but I can understand the question. I think it could go either way. Again, if that was the sole, you know, deciding factor, then we could probably talk about it a little bit more.
So another question, and now now I want to move from that parcel to another parcel. If we go to next to the um the gas station, the Cumberland Farm, it's empty now. But the uh ex, the owner now decide to have a building, build something, a huge building for storage or something like that. And uh next year, they sell it. So that building is will be like a 16-building, and now they can use it for cultivation or no?
I mean, I guess I can field it, but I I would say if it's an existing building and it's a different owner, then they can use it for cultivation.
Thank you.
I'm just, I'm sorry, um again, I'm just, I, you know, I I. I'm just trying to be responsive to the, to make sure that that question got answered. So. There is language that would define an existing building as sort of the date of this. Let's presume and there'll be a vote, so the date of the vote. The building would have to be in existence, so it it does attempt to say that you could not build a new building next year and then qualify. So there there are some, you know, it it wouldn't allow, I think, what councillor Gomez suggested is a new building get get constructed for some other use and then converted.
But that would be if this passes.
That would be, yeah, yeah.
If it doesn't pass, then that's absolutely 100% valid.
Because we have no definition of exist- yes, that, actually, yes, I didn't think about it in that sense, yes.
And that was, that's the reason I was asking. Thank you, councillor Derby.
Okay, councillor Rist.
Question regarding the permits, and I refresh my memory, Jeff or Salem, we have six licenses allowed in this city. Is is a license for cultivation included in those or is that separate? In other words, if all I want to do is build a cultivation. Site on a highway business zone, does that eat up one of those licenses?
No, Jeff, you want to, I I I would say no. Uh those those licenses are for retail.
So we don't have cultivation licenses already?
That that's to the state.
State decides, though, and there could be as many as we want a- as the state allows in the city?
Yeah, there's no, there's no cap, so so to speak, cap on cultivation facilities.
Wow, okay, I didn't know.
Councillor Rothschild, did I see your hand?
I have a question, um I think related to something councillor Zerrit had brought up. Why, if you can, why did you add the retail requirement, if you can, in an existing building cultivation without retail?
I'll let Tom take that one. Tom, do you want to take that?
I'd love to take it because it actually perfectly segues into what I was gonna respond to councillor Rist's thing, so awesome. Um, yeah, the reason was specifically because it's supposed to be like. The general thought it was that it's a retail-oriented uh district, and we didn't want a situation. Where every big parcel got snatched up by a cultivator. That to just build like a big warehouse to grow in and not have any retail component. Um because, like we said, there there is no cap on cultivation licenses, so that's a, that's a thing that could theoretically happen. Um I I I I should say that I'm paraphrasing the planning board whose idea this was. Uh but that was the sense that I got was that, A, they didn't want every available big parcel being taken up by uh. Uh cultivators and B, uh they wanted to keep the uh district oriented towards uh retail. And not having what what they described as a, as like dead zones where there might just be like a big featureless building. But no one coming and going uh in a major way throughout the day, although I would argue there's plenty of spaces that. Kind of fit that description already in the highway business, but I understood the um. The sentiment, and so we went with it.
Um councillor Zerrit and then councillor Rist.
And just to to and and to to your point or to your question, councillor Rothschild, I. I disagree. I think that if it's allowed now in an existing building. And that use is permitted, then why not extend, if we're talking about, if we are gonna talk about new construction, then why not just extend. That use to a new building, and I can think of lots of opportunities within the industry in small cultivation spaces where. That is something where we could really, we could have kind of highlighted uh opportunities. Um especially when you start talking about things like craft co-ops and an R and D component that's associated with. Um a cultivation space, but that has no retail attached to it. And therefore doesn't have to worry about um competing for one of our special permits. Um so to kind of go back about to councillor Peak's point about use. You know, we, if this is an existing use, why would we discriminate for between all the new buildings, but um that was, that was my concern.
Councillor Rist.
Two questions. First, if this does not pass, the current cannabis zoning in the highway business district. Would allow for cultivation as long as it was in an existing building. Or and that existing building could be expanded up to 50,000 square feet. Am I correct?
I mean, I understand the question. I, it's not 100% clear. Uh so again, I I'm I'm hesitant to have people banking on that that question and answer. Um there's one read of the ordinance is that without without any changes, that you are confined to an existing building. Um and and not allowed to expand because it doesn't constitute the definition of an existing building. It's 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 an expanded building, so. That in fairness, you know, there was also a lot of discussion to make sure that someone who has chosen to. Work on an existing building could then have the same opportunities as a new builder, new building, so. Um, you know, I think, I think that's the more important point, I think, i- is that. This amendment will allow that flexibility along with the flexibility for new building. Um two, two quick notes real quick was just, I in response to something that councillor Zerrit said, just in terms of, I think it was, you know, comments or questions, just that. Um. Just fairness as to, you know, why, like, changing the ordinance when someone else might have chosen a property based on the current ordinance, and. I just think that it, this section was always pegged for future um review. I I think in 2018, it was determined that we really need some more time to put together some some requirements and some regulations. So I think, I think it was really clear to some people that this was always gonna come up for review. And I think it goes to the complicated nature of it, which which is because this is complicated, and it was, it took this much time. To put in some parameters for new buildings, and I think, so like, to say that it's complicated is a is a problem, I think it's really just saying that. It was complicated because it took some time to put these parameters in place. Um and it was always pegged for for coming back to it at some point.
Councillor Rist.
The second question, Jeff. If there's an existing building right now, is there a. A cap or a. A square footage that must be provided before cultivation's allowed? In other words, can someone cultivate in 10,000 square feet or 5,000 square feet? If they find an existing building in this zone to do so? Or is there something in regulation that says you, well, no, you have to do it at least at 20,000 square feet or something like that? I mean, how big is INSA's cultivation area in an existing building? And I'm just curious if existing buildings in this zone, if there's one that exists that's a small square footage, is that allowed? Cultivation-wise. So you have to get a license from the state, of course, but still.
Yeah, and it would still require a special permit. I mean, it still requires a special permit in existing building. Yeah, I think the answer is there's no size limit for an existing building. Um I guess just one other, sorry, I, one other quick point is that, you know, the statement was that we've had a lot of success with reuse of buildings. Um I think it was, you know, for cannabis, um and there's elements of that that are true, certainly with the retail. Um we've seen, we actually have seen good success rates with reuse of buildings, but in terms of cultivation, the only the only one that we have is INSA. Which is in the mills, and so they're the only cultivator that is in an existing building that has figured it out. Um so I just wanted to, I I just wanted to calibrate that a little bit, just to. The success rate has been more attached to retail than cultivation, which I think. You know, I think there was some comments from councillor Derby as to the efficiency of new buildings might be something of value to a new cultivator.
Uh councillor Zerrit.
And to that point, I mean, and I can only speak to my experience, I might be wrong, but I think generally in most. But I think generally in most cities, the large scale cultivation is relegated to industrial zones. And so, you know, obviously that's true. I mean, the infrastructure that's been available in our city is not necessarily lent itself to reuse for cultivation, with the exception of, of INSA, for instance. I mean, one could potentially argue maybe that someone could have done a small scale grow in the old feeder space before that was demolished. But I'm digressing, but anyways, that's all I would have to say about that.
Hang on, Counsel Derby. I, I have, I have a comment. I don't think it will end up in a question, but maybe it will. Counsel Derby, in your presentation, at, at the, it might've been the last slide where you talk about what this won't do or something of that nature. And you talked about it won't prevent another business going into that site and kind of being stuck with 35 foot setbacks or any of those things. And I guess my only comment is they don't have to be stuck with that because we can change zoning, right? So if, if a stop and shop went in there, we could put in a, a buffer for vegetation. We could put in a farther thing. So I, that didn't really ring true for me in the context of this entire argument that yes, we in fact might get a large scale something to go in there, but it's zoned for that. And if we want to set different setbacks, sure, we can do that. That's what we're talking about doing. That's the whole argument around what we're talking about is we can change things as the situation arises. And, you know, so that was really my only comment. Coupled with the fact that today, we may have all received the same email, but I found it very distasteful to receive an email from the developer with hyping their website, talking about the Tasty Top site and where their buildings are going to be situated and that there will be a restaurant to Counsel Flood's point. That didn't sit well with me that, that that came out today. And so yes, we are talking about a single group clearly. And, and, and it felt like that website was put together rather hastily. There's a lot of mistakes in it. And I, my, that's really my comment. You can, you can argue and talk me out of it, but it, it's fine. I just felt that that was not cool, I guess, that, that I hastily put together website was put before us hours before this committee meeting. Counsel Peake.
To one of your points, one thing that we did repeatedly come back to over the course of these last eight months was situations where we would consider just sort of the experience of folks who are interacting with the space and how a large new building might affect them. And then we would realize that really that could kind of be the case with any large new building. And there's definitely been a number of points where we have said that when this is all over, regardless of how this goes, it might be appropriate to kind of take a, sort of a broader look at the Highway Business District. Because there's a lot of stuff about this project that really has very little to do with, with cannabis. There's, I think a lot of the, sort of the, the concerns that have been seen have been about just big buildings. And there's probably a lot of, you know, when we're talking about the decommissioning bonds and we're talking about residential setbacks, we're talking about, about things like that, like regardless of what happens here. I do think that there, there might be an opportunity for us to sort of look about at that stuff and the Highway Business District and how we just kind of generally use space.
So do any counselors have any new points to make? I would like to move on to the public, but if you have something new that you'd like to say, I saw Counsel Rothschild's hand go up first and then Counsel Rist.
No pressure, that needs to be new, but it will be short. I, I want to say I completely agree with you, President Coniff, about that email. It was very distasteful. I found it distasteful as well and also thrown together. This is a really hard topic. I've been, I, this is like, I even come into this meeting not completely decided how I'm going to vote. And when I make a pro con list, I actually have more on the pro side, but my gut still puts me on the con side. I think the reason is, is like in terms of other business types and usage, I don't think it's less benefit than another, than what could be there, because it's easy to throw out things that could be there that are like, oh, that would be worse or that would be worse. But that's not really what we're doing. I mean, so my concern is that it does feel about this piece of property, as other people have mentioned. It does feel that once you change zoning, you can't put it back. And if I'm feeling this much unease about it, I don't feel comfortable voting for a zoning change that I feel this uncomfortable about. I also feel that cannabis is become and is an elitist business. And I don't know if that's the kind of East Hampton that I'm, that I want, that, that, that people in our city have spoken about wanting. And when you see like the one on Cottage, it's small, but you know, it's a nice, small scale one. I don't know, the whole cannabis industry is honestly making me uneasy because of the elitist nature of it. It is a big business, Silicon Valley. It's not about equity. There's still people sitting in jails across our country for smoking pot while police forces are profiting from doing detail. And white men are getting rich. So it's not really an industry that I'm too excited about, to be honest. So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Counsel Rothschild. Counsel Rist, I know you had your hand up.
I was saying to the president that I thought we should move on to the public. I think we've really.
We were having a mind meld.
So if, if, just in my opinion, let's get the public in here. We still have opportunity to discuss this.
I do want to recognize Counsel Kuzinski. I don't think he has spoken yet. So go ahead, Counsel Kuzinski.
Thank you. I have listened to everybody and there are so many valid points on this. And so many people have, have done so much work and I appreciate that. And I appreciate your summarization, Counsel Derby. I think it was fair and directed. It's pretty straightforward. So thank you very much with your report and with your report too, Counselors Zaret. There are pieces to the zoning change that I really appreciate. None the least of which is the 150 foot buffer. I wonder if it's enough. I know it's more than we have in any, for any other type of use. But I do appreciate that. That did not go unnoticed. And I think it's a good idea to put in the vegetative buffer. But I agree with Counselor Coniff that that may be something that we ought to be considering for the future, for the zone in general. And not be faced with somebody coming in and then now dealing with those issues. I did have a few questions, Jeff, if I may, with regard to what's possible on a site like the Tasty Top site and other sites. If it's possible to set back from the road, a site, right now you couldn't have cannabis because there are no buildings apparently that would accommodate the use. Is that correct there? Or it isn't planned, someone would, would, would like to see a new building there. If there is a new build, so, so cannabis isn't there, cannabis could very well go into the CERNAC building. In fact, someone has, has set that aside. They, doesn't look like they could expand, although that may be a possibility depending on what we do tonight or in the future. My question has to do with if we did approve cultivation in new buildings and allow it further into the zone, we're not limited by the number of retail licenses. Well, we are limited by the number of retail licenses because we're tying a retail license to the cultivation at the current time. Let's say sometime goes down the road and someone says, hey, I, I'd like to see more cultivation. And we're not, we're not, you're not limited to cultivation, but could you change your retail connection here to the cultivation? And just like today, we're thinking, well, maybe we need to tweak our zoning and change it to allow the 200 foot buffer to go away. We might say, okay, fine, you could do cultivation. That would allow the site to develop multiple cultivation buildings, I would imagine. Jeff. Multiple cultivation buildings at a single site with a planned unit development, couldn't you drive a road in, get your frontage requirement and now still have the acreage to do a planned unit development and multiple cultivation sites? Kind of throwing out your 25,000 square foot limit.
I mean, to get frontage would have to be a legitimate road that would be a subdivision road, which would require subdivision process. And it would, I mean, I, I don't want to say it's not possible, but it's definitely not likely. The, the, the expectation is that you could put in an accessway, you could put in a road to access multiple buildings. So it's sort of like a mixed use development. But it wouldn't, you know, doing that, that's allowed in a planned business development, but that wouldn't make it a road that gives you frontage to carve off other lots for other uses. So I'll be a little bit honest as I couldn't entirely decipher what your question was. So I apologize because I could, I.
I apologize. It may have not, not come out as clearly as I would have liked. The question really is, could there be multiple cultivation sites with the right type of development on the site?
I, I suppose the answer is yes, but I want to be careful to say that you would have to go through a subdivision, a formal subdivision process under chapter, I forget now, 40, I forget what chapter, chapter 41, I think it is. It would be a full blown subdivision in order to put a road in that would provide other lots. That, and so that's a big difference between a planned unit development takes the whole parcel. And so this one's listed on the market as 34 acres. So you, you know, as a planned business development, you could build an interior road and have the same, it's all under the same ownership. But I think to do what you're suggesting would be a subdivision road, which is a separate process than would establish different lots. It would be more like a, like an industrial park. So if you think of an industrial parkway, industrial parkway represents to me like a subdivision road that has distinct parcels. I just don't, it is possible, but I don't think that that's what has been contemplated. I think it's a much larger endeavor to, to create a road that has independent utilities that would then provide utilities to individualize lots that would be served different cultivation entities. I think the, the, the tying it to retail would prevent that unless as you, I think, as you alluded to, if, if the future council increases the number of licenses and doesn't address it kind of specifically. So like I think as Counsel Zaret mentioned, like talking about equity licenses, I'm pretty sure even the early discussions was that the equity license were going to be distinct unto themselves. And would have to be applied, you know, for and, and granted as equity. And I, you know, I guess, I, I'm sorry if I didn't answer because I think the answer is yes, that that could happen. But it doesn't seem like it's the immediate sort of expectation.
I, I don't think it's the immediate expectation, but I'm just imagining you have a 25,000 square foot building on 34 acres. What are you going to do with the rest of it? Kind of my thinking there, but let's leave that for a moment. I know we, we, we want to move on. I do have great sensitivity to the equity issue that has been brought up by Counsel Flood, Counsel Rothschild. I agree with you. I think we need, and Counsel Zaret. I, I think we need to pay attention to how we make the business of cannabis available to those who don't have lots of capital and how East Hampton can be noted as a place where we strive to make that equity available. That being said, I'll leave it to the rest of the meeting and I'm sure I'll have further comments later.
Thank you, Counsel Kuzinski. You're killing me, Counsel Gomez. Counsel Gomez, really quick, because the public really wants to talk about this.
10 seconds. The email concerned me, but I didn't receive any email.
Okay.
I, I didn't find one either, so.
All right, I'll make sure you all get it. Actually, Counsel Rothschild, did you get it? Can you send it to the council? That would be awesome. Thank you. Okay, now let's talk, let's have the public, if there's anyone from the public who would like to make commentary around this topic, please go ahead and raise your hand virtually and we will call him. Okay, Daniel Martino, I'm sorry, Danielle Martino, I'm looking at something. Go ahead, Danielle.
Yeah, I just wanted to address a few things that were said. So there are a few things. So the, I just want to make sure the public knows this. The 25,000 square foot gross square footage for a cultivation center was changed without our knowledge. All of a sudden, the language just changed in the other ordinance meeting. I don't really know what happened there, but for a while you guys were talking about 75,000 square feet total for a cultivation and manufacturing buildings. So just putting that out there, I don't know what happened, but it did just change. And then these, these changes don't solve any of our concerns. So I understand that 150 feet is three times 50 feet. I understand the math, but 150 feet is not a lot. It's not a lot. It's something, but it's not a lot. It's not going to solve our concerns at all. And the fact that you, you have 50 foot buffers for existing businesses in different zones is just an indication that you probably need to update your zoning. Also, there's a community benefit to living next to grocery stores, doctor, doctor offices, gas stations, retail spaces. This is what highway business is meant to be used for. There is no public benefit to living next to a large cultivation and manufacturing building. That is what industrial parks and zones are meant for. Zoning ordinances exist for a reason. What's the point if a developer can just walk into your office or call you on the phone and suggest a change to the ordinance so they can do what they want to do? I have a home occupation. I live directly adjacent to highway business zone. When I was looking to buy my property, I called the city planner and said, hey, this isn't allowed in home occupations, but I'm wondering if I could open up a dance studio in this space. And the answer I got was absolutely not. So this is not fair. It's not. I don't care how you paint it. You can look at the trees, but I'm looking at the forest. This is not fair.
Thank you, Danielle. Brendan. Let us know where you are and.
Sure. Yeah, my name is Brendan Leith and I've lived at 89 North Hampton Street for the past five years. My partner Danielle and I moved here because we knew it would be a good place for her to open her home business as a licensed therapist working with children and families. As former North Hampton residents, we were drawn to East Hampton specifically because we greatly preferred the pro business and pro development approach of East Hampton, and we have loved living here. That being said, I have very serious concerns about the proposed ordinance amendment currently on the table, which could potentially allow several 25,000 square foot cultivation facilities to be built in new buildings across the Highway Business District. Up to this point, I feel that East Hampton has rolled out legalized cannabis in a very thoughtful and responsible way. However, this amendment is a step in the wrong direction, one that would not be easily reversed and one that could have disastrous consequences for our community for years to come. The ordinance as it stands protects the character of the neighborhood by encouraging reuse and was crafted with the long-term interests of the community in mind. I do not see a compelling reason to fix what isn't broken. Five of the six applicants have been able to work within the existing bylaws and we shouldn't weaken our ordinances by overhauling them in order to make room for any one specific developer. The 200 foot buffer zone serves as an effective measure to prevent clusters of cannabis establishments from becoming a cannabis row, which is especially undesirable as one's first impression of East Hampton upon entering from North Hampton. Picture for a moment the prospect we face of. Picture for a moment the prospect we face of having as many as four cannabis operators within three-quarters of a mile, many of whom could choose to build 25,000-square-foot buildings for cultivation. Concerns about odor, noise, light pollution, intensive use of natural resources, safety and the long-term health effects of living near these industrial-scale facilities are substantial enough for one building, let alone several. While the mitigations are appreciated, they do not address our larger concerns, many of which would remain even if the building were 1,500 or more feet away. I believe many in our shoes would not want a facility of this scale to be built next door. We spoke to dozens of our neighbors recently, and the response was nearly unanimous that a 25,000-square-foot cultivation facility was not something that belonged in such close proximity to a residential neighborhood. Other cities and towns in Massachusetts have situated these types of facilities in their rightful place of industrial zones. In my view, this is not how we should attempt to distinguish ourselves from the collective wisdom of other communities. The Highway Business District is an area with tremendous potential to bring commerce, innovation, and a sense of community that is good for all East Hampton residents. We have been thrilled with recent additions like Captain Jack's, El Comolito, and River Valley Market, and would like to see the area continue down this path rather than becoming an extension of an industrial zone. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brendan. Danielle, do you have another comment?
Yeah, sorry, I wasn't finished. I needed to gather my thoughts, so I appreciate the break. So some other points I wanted to mention was, I think Counselor Derby mentioned or inferred that the issue with the Tasty Top parcel was brought up by the abutters, but I just want to clarify that we actually didn't, we were trying really hard not to bring that up, but for some reason, it kept on coming up in conversations even before we attended the meetings. The Tasty Top parcel and E-Harp were being brought up in conversations with everyone. And also, it was very confusing because during these meetings, the developers would attend the meetings with their lawyers and stating a case of how they were craft cultivators and that this is small-scale. So it was confusing from the beginning. I never knew if this was or was not about Tasty Top. So I just really want to clarify that. And also, Bags, the city planner's comment, really, the comment, I think, I'm going to quote it, "pegged for future review." That comment really scares me because I believe this, I've really started to understand a little bit about how zoning and city planning works. And it seems like if you bring up something and you mention that it's pegged for future review, that that means that you could potentially bring it up in future conversations and that it would be something that is okay to talk about, which is fine. I mean, that's part of city planning. But one other thing that you mentioned was pegged for future review was the possibility of having multiple 25,000-square-feet cultivation centers on one parcel. So I think that this is a door that, once it's opened, will be really hard to close. And this potentially would lead to having a cultivation park as our neighbor, but also the highway business being an industrial zone. If that's what you want to do, if you want the highway business to be an industrial zone, then you should be stating that instead of making these, chipping away and making these small changes, which it kind of feels that way. And that really terrifies me, so I just want to make sure I mention that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Danielle.
Natalie? Hi. My video didn't start, so I didn't know if that was me or you. Hi, everybody. So I just want to point out that we just spent two hours discussing cultivation and pot shops. We already have enough shops. There are so many other things we could be wasting our time with. Two hours on another place is just unnecessary to me. I'm just throwing out ideas. We could always just, I know this isn't really money-making, but community centers, community garden, escape park, anything that is more East Hampton than another weed shop, because truth is, enough. We get it, okay? We got it. And I'm sorry, to me, it's like another one is doing nothing for our community. So that being said, I yield my time.
Thank you, Natalie. Anyone else from the public who would like to make a comment?
Yes.
Hang on. N-M-A-R-H, can you state your name and where you're from?
Sure. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
I'm kind of new to this computer business. So Nancy Marhefka, and I reside on the opposite side of the city, over in the Maple Street area, Route 141. So I am no way really feeling like I'm impacted by what goes into that Tasty Top site, so I just want to state that upfront. First of all, I would like to thank Ann Flood and Owen Zaret for their very well-thought-out comments and review of the situation. I really appreciated that. I feel like having this zoning ordinance go through is just for some of the council members, setting the stage for what will inevitably be approved, these giant cannabis-growing areas in East Hampton. Having been a resident here for over 30 years, a volunteer on the East Hampton Healthy Youth Coalition to divert substance misuse from children in our community, volunteered in many other ways for many other years in this community, and as a registered psychiatric nurse who sees the impact of cannabis, the real impact on adolescent youth that we have on psychiatric wards, is mind-boggling. The marijuana that comes from these places, and you cannot tell me, it will not trickle out of these places to the hands of the youth in this community. It will, just like cigarettes do from a 7-Eleven store. To see adolescents walking around in a psychotic state because of the potency of the cannabis that is sold today, very different than the cannabis that I experienced back in the 70s, very different substance, the brain is growing until the age of 25. And I just really, really oppose, as the speaker Natalie before, we have enough cannabis here. I agree with Mr. Zaret 100% that it should be restricted to current-use building, small. I am not opposed to cannabis for adults, but I am very concerned about the impact it will have on this community for children. East Hampton already is being referred to from communities outside as, oh, they are now the new quote-unquote cannabis row. Hoorah for East Hampton! I really, really am proud to raise my children here on cannabis row, okay? If you go into North Hampton, to the dispensary at the, across from, what is it, Jiffy Lube there, the police that have to be out there for surveillance, the traffic jamming up, all of the cars from Connecticut that come up here to get that in a very congested area really concerns me about what will happen on that highway business zoned area should we have retail restaurants selling wine-infused cannabis and edible products, et cetera, et cetera, let alone the risk of someone getting hurt or in a car accident. Myself, I just really feel that there has been little transparency. I feel like the council members are setting us up. I just want to say my piece. Setting us up for this to happen on this site for a specific company coming out to use our natural resources, our water, dumping liquid fertilizer for every growth cycle over and over and over again, increasing the pollution in our community, all of this stuff is real. It's real. And as far as the comment about Stop &amp; Shop or another big business going in there, I think the thing about Stop &amp; Shop or another big business, we were really trying to protect our smaller grocers, our local shops in the area. And we knew Stop &amp; Shop as by the last strike that happened and the treatment of their employees was really poor. I think we made the right decision in standing up and not having that put in on that site. You mentioned-
Wrapping it up, Nancy.
One second, one second.
Yeah, I can give you about five more seconds, Nancy.
Okay. Distasteful website that you were seeing, that you were all experiencing and saying that wasn't really cool and the way it was put out there. Alls I want to say to that is, when people show you who they are the first time, believe them.
Okay, thank you, Nancy.
Thank you so much.
Erin? Hello.
Okay, go ahead.
Hello. My name is Caitlin Courtney-Patrisse. I am a fourth-generation Courtney of North Hampton Street, and I now reside in South Hampton. I did not feel, I did not plan to speak tonight, but I feel compelled to. I'm speaking to you with sincerity in regard to the property that is fondly referred to as Tasty Top. I have been attending virtual meetings and felt compelled to speak to you with a brief history and my perspective on the land, as well as a genuine expression of gratitude for your time with this project. I acknowledge the scope of navigating this new industry of cannabis while managing a myriad of dynamics, combined with all of your work, communication, and all of this happening virtually. In 1902, 118 years ago, my great-grandfather, Michael Courtney, purchased this land on North Hampton Street as a way to provide for his family and serve the people of East Hampton. After their family farm was displaced in order to build the reservoir, he, along with my grandfather, Dennis Francis Courtney, my father, my uncle, and their family, farmed crops of tobacco, corn, pumpkins, and others while keeping dairy cows, providing milk and a farm stand for the community for three generations. In the mid-1950s, when farming started to decline, Tasty Top was opened to diversify income for our family. In 1966, when my father and uncle went to college, my grandfather sold the cows and planted his last crop, as it was too much for him to manage. The property has not been an active farm over 44 years. In 1998, my Aunt Maureen opened East Hampton Golf to accompany Tasty Top, and her son, who was my cousin, continues to operate that piece of business today. As a child, I grew up playing on the land. I lived in the farmhouse in 95 North Hampton Street, and I served ice cream out the window at Tasty Top through high school, college, grad school with my two sisters and five cousins. In its heyday, Tasty Top was iconic, a social gathering space and an honor to be part of. Once my grandmother passed away in 2000, my generation grew up and went away. The land became unkept, and our family pursued selling as it no longer serves our capacity. None of us in the fourth generation have the capital, wherewithal, or desire to farm or operate a business in this location. For 20 years, my father and his siblings, Dennis Courtney and Roy Courtney Ludwig, have sought to sell their family's investment in North Hampton Street Business District and use the money for their retirement, as farmers typically do not have retirement plans that they pay into. Unfortunately, my Aunt Maureen died in 2002, and my father John just recently died this past year, leaving my uncle Dennis as the sole family survivor of the third generation. Dennis has the challenge and responsibility to champion this land sale and will hopefully enjoy the benefit of the hard work and the farming that he put into this sizable plot of land that is zoned for commercial business. For over a century, the Courtney family farm, Golf Range, and Tasty Top have brought honest business, milk, vegetables, jobs, joy, community, and a sense of identity to East Hampton. I understand that many in the city are having a hard time letting go of the nostalgia of Tasty Top and the surrounding land, as am I. The property is a special part of my history as well as yours. However, times have changed, and so has East Hampton. My great-grandfather purchased this land as an investment. The farmland was his investment in the community and providing a legacy for our family that we worked every day. My grandfather had confidence that one day his family would be able to sell for financial security due to the designated zoning in the business district. As the city planner acknowledged in a recent meeting, we have the right to develop this land, and it is incredibly developable. I am writing, asking for a fair opportunity to do so. The past 20 years of seeking to sell and develop the land, specifically the Stop &amp; Shop project, proved to be excruciatingly challenging and painstakingly long for a myriad of reasons, such as considering other stakeholders and a business neighbor who has tried to block development on our land. It is important for me that you understand the intention, thoughtfulness, and integrity our family has in bringing a buyer, a solid plan, and a solid project to this beloved land and to this community that we've been part of for four generations. The timeline is as follows. In 2000, we decided to sell. Then in 2001, Walmart approached our family with a legitimate offer. We decided that this was not a good offer for the community, and we did not bring it forward. 2002 to 2019, 17 years, we worked with the town to have Stop &amp; Shop and a gas station be developed in that location. I'm going to skip this part, but for a myriad of reasons, this project folded because stipulations were put on Stop &amp; Shop and us as landowners that nobody else was asked to be part of. Since this time, both a grocery store, River Valley, and a gas station, Cumberland Farms, have been permitted a quick timeline and have been built in the business district. Many stipulations that were tried to put on Stop &amp; Shop were not added to these developments. Currently, in 2019, E-Harp approached our family, and the following reasons are why we are excited. As a family rooted in farming and business agriculture, having a cannabis crop grow on our land is as poetic as it gets. The land that we have farmed and done business on for 118 years would continue to be used for mixed use for agriculture and business as my great-grandfather purchased. This is a unique business opportunity that brings science, medical lab cannabis, and research, and can bring critical legitimacy to the cannabis industry for East Hampton, Massachusetts, and nationally. The research and forward development that E-Harp would bring to the industry is critical for East Hampton as they decide to move forward with this industry as they have already named. The property has been underutilized, buildings have aged, and they have become obsolete. E-Harp has the capital and interest to create a beautiful facility for our community. The property is more than a grow operation. It includes research, scientific accountability, a restaurant, green space, as well as the dispensary. They love the property due to its beauty and would make the property shine. There are many dated arbitrary and non-beauties buildings that are on North Hampton Street, but this is an opportunity to clean up this property and this end of the street. We feel like this is a really unique opportunity. E-Harp will bring over 140 jobs and invest millions into the city. An example I like to think about is that, if you look at other craft breweries and cannabis dispensaries that have joined together, their strength in numbers. Look at Stove Vermont or the Beverly Beer Mile in Beverly, Massachusetts, where you see breweries next to each other who champion each other. Look at Breckin Ridge or Telly Red Colorado, who have created unique niche communities where they all support each other and each other's successes are championed. In all four of these examples, business neighbors learn from each other, bring colleagues, and they collaborate on business events and projects and thrive off of each other. I want to acknowledge three concerns that have been brought up continuously through this process. Continuously being told how we should be able to develop our land. Our family bought this land in the business district 118 years ago. We have shared this land with the community during this time. We allow the community to hike, snowshoe, congregate, have picnics. During this time, we also have the right to sell this land. We have the right to encourage development in the business district in which it is zoned. Our family has kept this property beautiful, clearing trees, mowing, allowing people to gather on it, but it is not our reason for people to be, for us to be denied the reason to develop it. Other business owners have been allowed to build close to the road, have parking in the front of their building, and have put up three-story buildings and have blocked the mountain with very little contest. The beauty of our land should in no way stop us from being able to develop and sell. In regards to the view on North Hampton Street and the view specifically of the mountain, the mountain is unobstructed because we have farmed and plowed until this land for over a decade. Traveling on either side of this property down North Hampton Street, it is the trees and buildings that block the perspective. No other owners, whether residential or commercial, have been required to preserve the mountain. And you can look at, you know- And you can look at, you know, recent developments such as Crumblin Farms or the bank. We believe with E-Harp's design that they will continue to, sorry, that they will continue to preserve that mountain view and the green space on the property that we love. In regards to the butters, this is really, really tricky. My response is that our family has been there longer than all of the butters that are currently there, and that they willingly purchased property next to a zoned business district. And, you know, our family has the right currently to be farming. We do not wish to be farming, but that could be currently happening. There could be multiple businesses that are currently operating. And to wrap up, high-end developers seeking large, rare, rare large plots of land do not come around often. We have the right to develop and sell this land. Our family has been patient and understanding in trying to develop our land for 20 years. We have worked with amendments, requests, watch permit votes being pushed off continuously for 20 years. I have never spoken privately or publicly on this topic, but feel compelled to do so as the last two decades has not felt fair to our family. My generation of eight grown adults, all in their 30s and 40s, do not wish to inherit this property. We do not want to inherit another long-drawn-out approval process such as Stop and Shop, but we want to develop and sell this property. We fully believe that E-Harp has the best interests of our family land and that they will do wonderful things for the city, and we solely hope that you will at least consider this side. I thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you Erin.
Caitlin.
Oh, sorry, Caitlin.
And my husband, that's okay.
Okay, thank you Caitlin. All right, anyone else from the public?
Hello?
Jim, okay, Jim Coughlin, is that?
Yeah, that's me. My name's Jim Coughlin, I'm on 22 Plymouth Ave.
Before you start Jim, I just want to make a comment. Caitlin, I believe that was your name, we gave you an extraordinary amount of time because you are the owner of the property. Jim, I'm gonna give you three minutes, okay?
I won't take your three minutes.
Okay, go ahead.
I, I've lived on Plymouth Ave for the last four years. All of our neighbors here are not in favor of this. Everyone I've talked to, they don't want to see this happen, this development. I've done some research in terms of these growing facilities across the US. Like it or not, they emit a smell that is putrid in some cases. When I walk the bike trail along the mill buildings and smell the Insa facility, my wife and I walk that bike trail very often, you smell it all the time. And I really don't want that smell in this residential neighborhood. This is a neighborhood that is a quiet area, and people bought homes in this area because of the quietness and the unique nature of the neighborhood. You know, we, we believe that, my wife and I believe that these places are better in an industrial park area, not in a, an area that is so close to a lot of residential houses. And also, just trying to leave Colonial Ave in the morning and in the afternoon, the traffic concerns in this particular area are very bad, and I think that there are some serious public safety issues around adding a big development so close to our neighborhood. And I really, I agree with Owen Zaret and Ms. Flood about their comments. I don't think we should be changing zoning laws that were developed to protect the small guy, the existing buildings, the existing citizens in this, in this town for a corporate entity. And what will happen if marijuana or cannabis becomes legal nationwide, and all of a sudden these, you know, these entities get gobbled up by other places or other large growing facilities in the south where they can grow and have much bigger facilities? These businesses could be all obsolete, and I really don't think it's fair to the existing businesses, the existing cannabis businesses in town, that we are allowing changes to be made for this particular development. As it is now, I believe that some of the new businesses are struggling, and I just think we should allow the cannabis business to grow naturally and, and, and thoughtfully, and I don't think that this is the best use of the, of the land. And that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you Jim. Anyone else from the public? Natalie?
Hello everyone again. So, I just want to stress that my opinions on not having a pot shop or a weed shop in East Hampton has nothing to do with the smell. It has nothing to do with it leaking out. We don't have reefer madness going on because I think that's frickin', excuse my language, I think that's ridiculous. We have plenty of pot shops outside of East Hampton that I'm sure. Listen, there's an opioid epidemic. I, I'm not concerned for the weed, however, I am concerned for having another weed shop in East Hampton when we already have two and there's just no reason to have another one. If, there's just so many other things we could be doing with that space. I always loved Tasty Top. I brought my children there, and I do feel bad that unfortunately this is what's happening. But again, I'm not against cultivation, I just think East Hampton has enough going on. The smell is not an issue, and it leaking out to our children who are predisposed to cigarettes and alcohol every day. Yeah, I, I think we need to ease up, but I'm done. Thank you guys.
Thank you. Danielle?
Yeah, I, I just wanted the opportunity to speak, since I'm abutting the Tasty Top property to Caitlin's essay statements. You know, I have a lot of compassion for the property owners that are adjacent to me. I understand that, I understand the circumstances, and this I guess is why it's so confusing as to whether or not this is about Tasty Top, because it seems to come up even when we try not to talk about it. And I really think that, and I'm not going to speak for very long, but I really think that this is an opportunity for the town to really look at this parcel of land and the struggles that the owners are having with being able to sell the land and really, you know, I'm, I'm thinking that this land could be so much more than, than a pot factory. And I'm hoping that, you know, that we could consider the future uses of this land and maybe help the owners of this land to sell, potentially maybe making it into a public use because of the history. A park, it could be many things, a park, a dog park, a skate park, it could be a co-op, you know, we need clothing stores in East Hampton, we could keep Tasty Top, like there could be so much more that this space could be, that could benefit the surrounding communities. And I really just don't think that a pot factory is it. But I do want to just respond to, since Caitlin did, did mention, you know, did comment, I just want to respond to that, that, as a butters, we're very much aware of this issue, and we, we support the selling of this land. We want it to be something, but it, right now, the zoning ordinance doesn't allow this, and I think there's good reason behind it. I think the ordinance is currently working, so that's it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Caitlin? Caitlin? You have your hand up again, did you want to speak? There you go.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, Danielle, I appreciate that a lot. I think what it ultimately comes down to is, you know, we love this land, East Hampton loves this land. Our family, this is retirement and our family's future, and so, you know, a dog park is just not going to pay the bills for our family. And so, well, you know, it's a nice sentiment, we have the ability to sell this land. Lots of developers want this land, but it's proved to be very challenging for both projects, and so, you know, that's why I felt compelled to speak.
Thank you Caitlin. Anyone else from the public? Not seeing anyone? Okay. So, at this point, we can do a couple of things. We can take a quick break if you need it before we get into the final motioning and/or not, we can vote, we can, does anybody need a break?
I prefer a vote, Madam President, because after this is a better time to have a break.
Okay, that's fine.
That's my opinion, I'm one for the...
By the look on your face as if you were struggling, so, okay. So, Councilor Derby, oh, I'm sorry, Councilor Zaret?
President, kind of, I just had a quick question, mostly parliamentary procedure. That petition that was sent out, I just want some, are you going to offer some clarification?
Yep. So, so I guess I'll do that, Councilor Derby, before you launch into your thing. So, today we received a petition from petitioners, and it is, it is a quote-unquote protest petition that is part of the Massachusetts general laws when you have a change to a zoning ordinance. By law, for the city council requires a two-thirds vote for it to pass, and that would mean that it was six votes. However, if you have a protest petition sent forth, you can, you must, if the petition is accepted, you need to have seven positive votes for the, the motion to pass. And I'm gonna pull up the email real quick. So, these, and again, it is part of the general law, so if you read the general law, it talks about how the city council is required to have a two-thirds vote in order to move the motion forward, but then the next couple of sentences are unless you have a city council that is less than 25 members, we are, then a petition can be put forth by the...
President, point of, point of clarification, if I may? Is it possible to post...
I may have gotten to, I'm sorry.
Is it, yeah, it was just a point of information. I wonder if it'd be possible to share any of this on a screen, since it is probably new to most people, and certainly to the public to be able to understand the specifics of a general law and to see the petition and what it says.
Sure. Yep, I can do that. So, let me, I just want to pull up the, there's a couple of different responses that we got on this today, so let me make sure I can share this. How do I share? I'm sure I can. Okay, let me get rid of a couple of windows. Okay. All right, so, can you guys see this? Is it sharing?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So, this is the petition that we received today. So, it has the, it has a number of names and addresses on it, and that, the, I need to pull up another email, or Jeff Bag, you can speak to it. We did run this past the attorney today, the city attorney, and, and basically all he said was this is what this petition means. And the, the upshot was it, and I, I don't have it in this particular share, but the upshot was that if you have this petition and if you have 20% of the, Jeff, help me out here, was it, was it 20% of the land owners of the entire district, if the 20%, if they, if the people who signed the petition have 20% of the land that abuts up to this zone, then this petition is valid. And Jeff, if you're still on, can you pull up the, the criteria that the lawyer spoke to today? If you can, if you're on.
Yes, I'm still on, I'm happy to do that. I think you're, you're correct, it's, it's, it's based on land area of those who have signed. It's rarely not straightforward, I will quickly say that. It's not 20% of the land owners, you know, it's not 20% of the signatures of the land owners, it's the land area, it's a, it's a calculation. So, I will pull up the, we, we did send it to the attorney so he could help clarify this, and so that's the email you're asking for?
Yep. Do you want me to stop sharing, or do you want to just read the criteria that he mentioned?
I think it'd be easier for me to pull it up, but I'm not enabled as a host to do that at the moment.
I'll do that for you. Okay, and I will stop sharing.
Okay, and it's just gonna take me one second here to...
And, and city councillors should have all gotten the document that I showed you in your email, and so you got that today. What you may not have gotten is what Jeff is referring to, because I think he only sent it to me, and it was really just clarifying what this was, but it's not going to necessarily come into play tonight, and that's what I was going to explain, but go ahead.
Can you, okay.
You can go ahead Jeff, why don't you explain it?
Okay, it's really hard on Zoom, if I, I wasn't, I wasn't sure if I was muted or not, thank you, sorry. So, this is an email received this afternoon at about 4:15, 4:20 from the attorney. The, the beginning part is, was the question about what would be the quantum vote, like what would happen with two-thirds versus three-quarters, and so that was pretty straightforward actually to determine that with the three-quarters vote, it's seven members. But then the second highlighted sentence is, this is from the attorney's written comments that it's important to note that the signature requirements is based on the area of land and not the number of signatures. So, I think it's very difficult to get through all of this, but there's two thresholds which could have been petitioned, which is property owners within the district in question. So, as we've been talking about the Highway Business District, one opportunity would be signatures that constitute 20% of the land area of the Highway Business District itself. That would have been like option A, and that, that wasn't submitted. Option B is 20% or more of the area of land immediately adjacent to it. So, so it says 300, when property, property owners, property within 300 feet. So, this, this tells us that we would need to do this calculation of area for the land that surrounds the Highway Business District within 300 feet, and you come up with a land area calculation, and then you look at the number of people who signed the sign of the petition, and the size of their parcels, together has to amount to 20% of that area that we've calculated. It's worse than what we just spent eight months creating, but, you know, I'm sorry.
So many to get from here Jeff. So, the point of that is, and thank you for the clarification, is that we don't know the answer to A and B tonight. We don't know that. This will have to be looked at and researched, and I know Jeff, you sent me an email, but that's not confirmed, so we're not gonna talk about the if, ands, maybes, or buts about this. We need to validate this petition, and we can't do it tonight. So, the, the question on the table then is, we, we can vote, and if, if we vote with, and we don't get six yeses, the motion fails, the petition is moot. If we vote and we get seven yeses, the motion passes, the petition is moot. If we get six yeses, what we will do is we will do a motion to reconsider, and we will validate this over the next whatever, one to two weeks or longer, and once we find out if this is valid and appropriate, then we will either say no, it passed with six, or we do in fact need to have a seventh vote and we need to re-vote. So, those are the options on the table. This, the third, fourth, fifth option is we continue this hearing until we get this squared away. My opinion is I would like to vote tonight and see where it lands, and then take the appropriate action based on if this petition, once we find out we can do a secondary, oh, so many hands. I'll start with Tom Peak, then Councilor Zaret, and then Council Rist.
As somebody who has made a bit of their career in working with GIS software, I can say that validating this land area thing is going to be a bit of work. I think that given that there's only, I mean, I think that six is a number we could land on, but I... land on, but I, just reading the reactions of folks, I, I'm not sure that that's the number that's going to happen. I think that we should take the vote before we put, uh, the, our already stressed planning department to the task of validating a petition that may be moot.
Okay, uh, Counselor Zaret?
I concur with my colleague, Counselor Peak.
And Counselor Rist?
I concur, I also feel that this will require a great deal of city attorney involvement, and the cost of that, when we don't know whether we actually need it, we should vote tonight to see where we stand. And the real threshold is six votes, if we get seven, we get five or less than five yeses, it doesn't matter. Thank you.
Okay, uh, okay, Counselor Derby?
Okay, uh, I would like to make a motion, uh, to accept, um, Section 10.10.4.2 as amended with Sections A through H as presented by the city planner, uh, in his latest email.
Second.
Motion is second to accept the changes to 10 dot 10 dot 4 dot 2, A through G inclusive?
H.
H, oh, there was an H, okay, sorry, hey, okay, sorry about that. Uh, any further discussion, Counselor Rist, start your hand first.
I feel I should explain myself. I fully came into this meeting, supporting the Ordinance Committee, I believe they've worked hard, and I believe, in all fairness, the businesses in the area, I believe this, it's unfair to limit cannabis. On the other hand, I've been persuaded greatly tonight, and I'm not happy with a California company giving us an email, that really disturbed me. So, just to be fair to all my councillors, I am totally torn now, I was ready to vote yes, uh, strongly in favor, but, um, I am disturbed. So, if you hear me abstain, you'll know why. Thank you.
Uh, Council, I, I, okay, go ahead, Counselor Derby, and then we'll go to Counselors there.
Thank you, and, and I'm, honestly, like, normally, I would try to change people's minds, I'm not going to, um, you know, we worked really hard on this, I think I presented it the way it is, um, which I think is, you know, representative of what, something that's fair, and, um, and something that's well thought out, uh, and, but I do, I need to, I need to say something, and I think it's really important. So, you know, throughout this process, I heard a councillor shed kind of a disparagement on the committee, and that was echoed by a citizen, and I feel like I need to address that. You know, I think that being called, um, you know, or being called out for not being transparent, uh, is, is disappointing, um, and then to have it echoed is even more disappointing. Um, and I, and I would hope that my fellow councillors on the committee with me would agree that we were absolutely as transparent as we could be in this process, and, um, and, and to the point where, you know, I, I received an email from the, the E-Harp people, um, and I, my only reply was, it's not with, unless you want to come and speak at the public meeting, it's not appropriate for me to correspond with you. Um, and, you know, so I'll be transparent and say that that is my response, when, you know, um, the, the propagated, someone who was involved in this project reached out to me, uh, and, and I think that's an appropriate way, because when you, when you do this, you should do it in public meeting, you shouldn't have closed doors meetings with people, and I, and I can't, I can't say that, you know, for me, this is, it's very upsetting, because when we got this, we specifically tried to be agnostic as it related to the zone. Now, you can make inferences that, yeah, we talked about Tasty Top Property, this and that, but we specifically, every time, steered it back to being agnostic. And I, like, I don't know why, why our committee should say that we should just fess up and, and be more transparent, when we weren't trying to legislate for the Tasty Top Property. And so, that's upsetting to me. And, you know, I, I think that that is something that we need to be careful of, because words matter, because then, the, you know, this becomes narrative, that somehow, the city council committees are not transparent. And, you know, as a citizen who loves this community, you know, I'm going to do everything I can to be on the level and to be as honest and fair as I can be in this process. So, I don't like it when we are called not transparent, so I just, I needed to say that.
Thank you, Counselor Derby, Counselor Zaret?
First of all, I just want to repeat again that, um, how much I value and respect my fellow councillors on the committee and, and the planner, and that, and the work that went into this. Regarding your concerns, Counselor Derby, I think that it's, it's fair for you to be concerned about that, I think that, as I stated in, in my, my report, I think that I had a hard time separating myself from this, and I think there were optics that may have appeared, like transparency issues, and I even touched upon that, and that's not stating that there are transparency issues, but I, it was, for me at least, it was an "I feel" statement. You know, I feel like I learned a lot from, from this process and the deliberations, and it's helped me look back on maybe some things that I could have done differently. But, um, um, this is complicated, and, um, um, I, you know, I, I don't, I haven't changed my thought process about what I presented earlier on, um, I really enjoy working with this group, though, because it does show how individually, um, we tackle these, these ordinance issues, and I appreciate all the work, uh, you, um, Chair Derby have done with this issue, and over the years as well, and, um, I think this has just been a tough topic.
Um, thank you, Counselors there. I'm going to ask you guys to try to keep your comments related to the motion on the floor, um, I did see, uh, Counselor Peak, and then I saw Counselor Flood, so go ahead, Tom.
Um, Counselor Rist mentioned that the, the email, uh, that we received, uh, was upsetting, and I think that that's a valid thing to feel. I also think that when it comes down to this stuff, like, I, I think you can make a valid critique of the way I'm thinking about this as being overly narrow, and if so, like, that's fine, we can disagree on it. But I think that, when it comes down to it, you know, early on in this process, a representative from E-Harp reached out to me and wanted to talk about the economic benefits, the, the, you know, the, uh, the new revenue, the jobs, the wages, the research, and all that, and I, I, I had a, we had a, I had a brief, respectful conversation, where, where what I essentially said was, that sounds great, you should tell it to the planning board if this passes. What is on our agenda is about whether land in a particular zone can be used in a particular way. And past that, decisions about whether, what should be on a particular parcel, what this community needs, um, how these things affect it, are decisions that are made by private individuals, companies, there are decisions that are made by the planning board, there are decisions that are made, to some extent, by the mayor and the city planner. Our job is to set the parameters for how land should be used, and that, I, I, I can't, I can't force anybody to not consider their opinions on this particular parcel, or this particular company, um, or for the, their opinions on the general state of the cannabis industry, which I have abundant problems with myself. But when it comes down to this stuff, I would ask that people consider the possibility of restricting this to what is actually the motion on the floor, which is, should this use type be allowed in this zone? That's all.
Thank you, Counselor Peak, Counselor Flood?
Just briefly, I want to acknowledge, I have an immense amount of respect for my colleagues on the council, the time that you've put into this. I, my comments about transparency were not a personal attack on anyone, it was just an "I feel" statement based on the optics and based on the information that I have been presented with in the amount of time that I've been watching this process. So, I just, I want to reiterate that I do appreciate the time and the effort, and I do acknowledge that you tried to keep this agnostic, and it's unfortunate that the, the email that we got today and some of the other discussions, um, have made it feel differently than the process that you tried to steer it. So, I really do thank you for your time, and, um, you know, it was not meant as a personal attack on anyone.
Uh, Counselor Zaret?
Just really quickly, since there were some other disclosures, I want to also disclose that I was also contacted by the owner of the proposed project, and I gave a similar comment that I felt that if he wanted to discuss the business in front of the committee, that he could come and present at the ordinance committee, and that I echoed, uh, what Counselor Peak said, that his concerns were more of ones that would be presented to the planning board, and that's just for the sake of transparency, and, um, um, just to make sure that I made that clear.
Thank you, Counselor Zaret. Any other comments before we take the vote? Counselor, uh, Counselor Kuzinski? Hang on, Counselor Derby, Counselor Kuzinski?
I just wanted to make a few comments, uh, regarding, excuse me, uh, regarding the, the cultivation is allowed in the Highway Business District, so I don't feel like we're being overly restrictive in voting, uh, that cultivation not be allowed in new construction. That being said, I've been contacted by plenty of residents, and all in Precinct One, by the way, and all, on Plymouth Avenue, Colonial Avenue, Alden, Groveland, Highland, Northampton Street. Not a single one has spoken in support of making the changes to our zoning ordinance.
Thank you, Counselor Kuzinski, uh, Counselor Derby?
Thanks, and I'll be brief, I just want to, I just want to acknowledge Tom Peak for his, his wisdom beyond his years. Uh, I, I think that the, the way to, to look at, when you're doing zoning, it's, it's, that is exactly the tact to look, you know, does this use fit, um, in that zone? And, and for me, JP is absolutely right, this is allowed in that zone. So, all those neighbors that are, you know, that signed that petition, that were against the, the odor, the noise, the light, that's all, that's all coming to your neighborhood, because it's already in process. Um, and traffic, I would say, probably a large-scale retail development is going to increase traffic significantly more than a project like this anywhere in the zone. Um, and so, you know, sometimes, I guess, it's be careful what you wish for, uh, and, you know, I don't know, um, if, if, you know, what I said is going to change anybody's minds in my, in my presentation, but I do know that as far as equity goes, and as far as fairness goes, allowing people to build new buildings that are state-of-the-art, that are, you know, airtight, um, that are vertically integrated, you know, if you want to talk about equity, if, if you're trying to build equity in a business, doesn't it make sense to not have to find a supplier? To be able to have vertical integration built into your, into your site, where you can grow your product, process your product, and sell your product in one space, um, not to mention the environmental pieces, so I think that's important to, to recognize. So, you know, I think this, if we're looking at it straight, straightforward, does this use fit? It does, because it's already allowed there, and this just cleans it up and puts in a lot of mitigating, um, conditions, so, that's all I have to say.
Okay, all right, no further discussion, then we will take a vote, go ahead, Barbara.
Owen Zaret?
No.
Barbara, JP, we've started the vote, we've started the vote, what, what is your comment?
Point of information, I'd like to be able to have the motion before us, so that the public and the councillors can see every piece of it, in case there's an amendment to be proposed.
I believe Salem showed us the, earlier today, uh, Salem, you're on mute, but...
I can bring it, I can bring it up again, if you want me to.
I'm sorry, Barbara.
Point of order?
Yep.
Hasn't the time for an amendment passed?
We're not amending, there's no amending, there is just visually showing it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yes, we, so there is the motion. 10 dot 10 dot 4 dot 2, as displayed, A through H inclusive, the change.
Thank you, Madam President.
You bet. Uh, sorry, Barb, go ahead.
Uh, you're up next, Peg.
I'm a no.
Salem Derby?
I'm a yes.
Erica Flood?
No.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
No.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Yes.
Lindsay Rothschild?
No.
One, two, three, five no's and four yeses.
Okay, motion does not pass, motion fails. Okay, does, uh, at this point, do we want to take a short recess? Do we need...
Let the public hearings be closed first?
Second.
I think that someone's paying attention. Any discussion, Barbara?
Peg Coniff?
Yes.
Salem Derby?
Yes.
Erica Flood?
Yes.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski? Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Public hearing is now closed. Does this council need a short recess?
Move for a five minute.
Please, five minutes, please.
All right, we're in recess for five minutes, until 10 after 9, oye, okay, see you then.
You worked hard, Salem.
Yeah, yeah, good thing I didn't have a horse in the race.
Life goes on. It's funny, Peg, you were always in that corner, the left corner of my screen, like, that's the one, number one spot, now you've moved, I want to know why that happened.
Because I didn't come in first.
Oh.
Salem did?
Well, thank you, Salem, in your heart too, I hope.
Yeah.
Not really.
I don't think our council holds grudges, we're all set.
Ne- never.
Not once.
No, no, shake hands and, at the end of the day, right?
Yeah, yeah, we do.
I distinctly remember the first time that I had, that there was a tough vote when I was on the council.
I was on the council. And I remember me and Counselor Rist were on opposite sides and after it, he came over and was like, hey, you did a really good job arguing your case on that. And I was like, oh, okay, so.
We'll just.
I think you should be upset about the comment about your, your old wisdom or whatever Salem.
Wisdom beyond my years. Wisdom beyond yours is absolute.
You're still broadcasting guys, just.
Babe, we're just letting off steam.
I'm going to mute you guys, we're still broadcasting live.
Yeah, all right.
Chill out, everyone.
It's been three hours.
I understand. I understand, although the public may be enjoying it, so maybe we should just go with it. So we're waiting for JP and Omar. There he is. And there he is. And let me make sure Barbara's back. Barbara, are you back?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Great.
All right. I think we're all here, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Oh, I can count to nine, so that's good. Okay. I think I know the answer to this, but I'm going to ask it anyway. Mayor, do you have any comments you'd like to make or any mayor communications?
No.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay. Uh, reports of standing committees, finance, Counselor Rist.
Thank you, Madam President. We did meet twice since the last meeting. One was to deal with the supplementals that were approved tonight. The second meeting on November 30th, just to make the long story short, we discussed at length the 121A alternate tax payment for one Ferry Street and the finance committee did approve it three to zero. This is set for public hearing on the 16th. I was told by Planner Bag that we may get a report from the planner. So I do, we do hope that we might be able to conclude this on the 16th. Once I'm, Jeff is going to look into whether we could do that. We will meet next on December 9th, finance committee members, because we have one item I'd like to disperse with that night and that, that'll be for new business. Can I get a thumbs up from planning board members the ninth at five o'clock?
You mean?
I mean, planning board, finance meeting.
And at five o'clock, did you say?
Yes, on the ninth, okay Omar, okay.
Okay.
I will read the new business into committee. We have a supplemental appropriation. I'll make a first reading. Request is hereby made for the approval of the following appropriation. $112,193.67 to be transferred from free cash to be transferred to police base pay $8,111.64. Police education incentive, $60,957.32. Police sick leave buyback, $28,398.74. $9,733.97 for police unused vacation. Police uniform expense, $5,000. The amount is to be used for the following purpose, to restore fiscal year 21 contractual and already budgeted payroll obligations for police education incentive, sick leave buyback, unused vacation and uniform expense to their original proposed amounts. These funds will provide for contractual obligations for police incentive pay and payout of a captain Chris Patnose FY21 retirement, as well as to cover anticipated uniform expenses. I move that this be sent to the finance committee for review.
Second.
Motion is second to send the aforementioned supplemental appropriation to the finance committee. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Salem Derby.
Yes.
Erica Flood.
Yes.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Man Rist.
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Aye.
Owen Zarek.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
Yes.
I further move that the aforementioned appropriation be set for public hearing for the first meeting in January, January 6th.
Second.
Motion is second to set the public hearing for the appropriation to January 6th. Any discussion, Barbara?
Erica Flood.
Yes.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Yes.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Yes.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Yes.
Owen Zarek.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
Yes.
Salem Derby.
Yes.
Motion passes.
That concludes, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Rist. Public safety, Counselor Gomez.
Thank you, Madam President. We have a meeting yesterday and, uh, the only thing that we have in our agenda was the request to review the on-street parking and the traffic rules in order. Uh, the committee decided to remove it without prejudice. Uh, the reason to remove it without prejudice is, uh, after the evaluation, the, the decision that probably that we're going to make is going to cost money to the city. What is happening now in, in our country, in our city, I think is not the right, the right time to make any decision with this. Uh, we're expecting to see something happening in Union Street, uh, next year and probably we're going to bring, we can bring it back by then and we can, uh, attach together this with, with that project. And that's the reason we're going to remove it without prejudice. We vote three to zero and the committee to remove it. So now I'm going to make a motion to remove it, uh, without prejudice.
Second.
Second.
Motion is second to remove the request to review on-street parking restrictions and traffic rules in order from the agenda without prejudice. Any discussion? Barbara?
Peg Coniff.
Yes.
That doesn't seem right, order, that's okay. Salem Derby.
Yes.
Erica Flood.
Yes.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Yes.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Aye.
Owen Zarek.
Yes.
So thoughtful, Owen. Okay, motion passes.
That concludes.
Thank you, Counselor Gomez. Counselor Rothschild.
Hi. Counselor Flood and I met today. Uh, Counselor Kuzinski wasn't able to make the meeting, but, um, so we had 33 reappointments to, to, um, recommend and out of the 33, one of them, uh, Ro- Ronald Bednar's, she's no longer up for reappointment, um, to that, so now we have 32. Uh, I, I, I reached out to the majority of the 32 people, 33 people, and it was just really fun for me, because it's my first time doing it, just to hear people's interests and their, what they're working on, their passion. So many people mentioned that one of the things they really enjoyed about what they were doing is the people they were working alongside and how much they liked this community and, and how much they were learning. So it was, it was, it kind of just gave me more inspiration to keep showing up and reaffirm my love for the city. Uh, one, one I want to note in particular was Deborah Lucinia, who's up for reappointment for the school committee. She wrote me a really nice response, really long, chronicling her history working for the school, school buildings in East Hampton, which started back in 2003 when our own kids were in school. In fact, I remember moving here in 2010 and seeing like a diorama or model for the new high school and she was there, her hair was long then. And, um, just she stuck in my mind then and that was when her own kids were in school and now she's still working on it and her kids are no longer in school. So I think, um, we have a real debt of gratitude for Deborah's continual and persistent work for the schools in East Hampton. So anyway, without, without, I'd like to, um, make a motion to move the 32, do I have to, do I list all their names or do I just? Do I have to say all of them?
Do we need to?
Point of information, is it possible to post the names and therefore the public can see them? To read them all, I don't know, but if you can post them, I think that's great.
Why don't we do that, Lindsay? Do you, is it post, like, can you bring it up or?
I can, the problem is I'm using two screens.
I think it's, I think it's a part of the agenda for the last meeting.
Someone else wants to do it. Um, Peg, do you want to do it?
Uh, yeah, I'm looking for it.
You, you can look for the appointment, um.
Appointment, I mean, I could do it too, but just, it's not up on, it's up on my other screen.
Okay.
Then I always read them if you can't get them up on the screen.
I mean, I can do it, but.
Yeah, I'm looking for it, hang on.
Are they for different committees?
Yes. I have it if you want me to do it now.
Okay, go ahead. Look, do you want me to, I need to make you co-host, go ahead.
Okay, hold on. All righty, I'm going to zoom back up. Share screen. Got it?
Got it.
So here's all our names. There's a lot, just.
Could I ask Barb why the one individual was no longer Ronald Bednar's?
I can tell you that.
Okay.
He was relieved of his duties last week.
Okay.
By personnel, so.
Oh, all right.
Therefore, he's not up for rea- reappointment.
Okay, thank you. Is that sufficient for everyone to say that this list is what we will be voting on? Does anyone have any questions or concerns about Counselor Rist?
I only want to say thank you to Counselor Kuzinski because this allows the public through video to see who's being appointed for what. So I think we can move 32 names as long as the public is aware of who's going where. And they're reappointments, they're not new.
Correct. Yep, they're already on these committees. Okay, if we're good with that, then go ahead, uh, Counselor Rothschild, and make a singular motion.
I'd like to make a motion to move the 32 reappointments, um, everyone on this list except Ronald Bednar's. Not to move it, to confirm them, is that what I said? To confirm their appoint, reappointments.
Second.
Motion is second to confirm the 32, uh, reappointments as, uh, shown in this meeting and on the video. Um, any further discussion?
Salem Derby.
Yes.
Erica Flood.
Yes.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Aye.
Owen Zarek.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
Yes.
Is that it, Counselor Rothschild?
That concludes.
Yeah, I, you don't have any new business, so there's no new meeting to align, so, okay. Counselor Derby, we haven't heard from you tonight.
Okay. So I'm going to, I'll, I'll make it easy. I have no report tonight. I looked at my calendar, realized we don't have a next meeting, so we, I will confer with my committee members soon and we will get one posted quickly.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Derby. Counselor Zarek, property. Counselor Zarek?
Thank you, President Coniff. Just pulling up the agenda. Uh, we have one item, uh, on our agenda, the pole location request, uh, on Main Street near True Heart Drive. We have set a, uh, meeting for, uh, the 16th, the 12th, uh, December 16th, 2020, to be clear, at 5:15 PM. And I am playing phone tag with the Eversource person, uh, but they will need to be there, hopefully. Um, and then there's a public hearing for that item set on the same day. I had talked about a reorganization during that meeting, but in the interest of brevity, perhaps we could put that off to the meeting following. And thus concludes.
Thank you, Counselor Zarek. Rules and government relations, Counselor Peak.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, we have not met since our last meeting, uh, and we don't have a meeting scheduled, although I'd like to do that sometime in the near future. Uh, I, I, uh, we do have two items to, um, add to our, uh, agenda and, uh, one is from Counselor Rothschild and one is one from Counselor Kuzinski. Uh, so, uh, uh, let's start with the, uh, proposed charter change, uh, regarding mayor compensation, section 31C. Uh, Counselor Kuzinski, would you like to say anything, uh, to this?
Essentially, the situation is that we had, uh, a charter which was based on a mayor's two-year term. So that essentially in the first, the counselors and the mayors get appointed or get, get elected, they go into office in January. In that first year, the counselors meet and they have to vote on a mayoral salary increase or none can occur for the following two years after the next biennial city election. Well, if you, now that we have a four-year term, that creates a problem because after the two-year term, there's another two years that the mayor still serves. So it puts a very deep conflict where you really, in my opinion, shouldn't have, uh, the mayor be under any, uh, position where the council could raise you, give you, give you a raise without a city election to occur in between. So I think we need to address that language to have it be such that the, any salary increase to be voted has to occur at the next, uh, biennial, biennial city election at which a mayor will be chosen.
Yeah, and that's something, I, we, yeah, I know we discussed this at that last, at our last meeting, uh, you know, it just.
We're going to debate it, Tom.
Yeah, yeah. Well, uh, I will make a motion to move, uh, the proposed charter change for, uh, mayor compensation, uh, to the rules and government relations committee.
I'd like to second it.
Motion is second to move the proposed charter change around the mayoral compensation to the, uh, rules and government relations committee. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Erica Flood.
Yes.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Aye.
Owen Zarek.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
Yes.
Salem Derby.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Uh, and then, uh, Counselor, uh, Rothschild, uh, had submitted a amendment to rule 11J. Uh, would you like to introduce that or should we just move it?
We could just move it, it was just a slight, you know, English teacher change.
Okay, great. Uh, so I'll make a motion to move, uh, uh, the suggested amendment to council rule 11J, committee reports, to the rules and government relations committee.
Second.
Motion is second to move the, uh, rule 11J changes to the rules and government relations committee. Any further discussion?
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski. Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Aye.
Owen Zarek.
Aye.
Peg Coniff.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Erica Flood.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, uh, thus concludes.
Thank you, Counselor Peak. Counselor Peak, do you have anything to add on range choice voting committee?
Uh, we met last month and, uh, we were very close to being done with our ordinance. Uh, I think the only thing we really have left to button up is just handling how we're going to handle write-ins. So that's going to be our topic in our next meeting, uh, which will be sometime this month, but I, off the top of my head, couldn't tell you when.
The 17th, December 17th.
Great. Uh, Counselor Kuzinski, do you want to give a quick update on the senior tax workoff?
Quick update, we're rounding the final turn here, so heading for the home stretch. And, uh, we have a meeting on December 10th, that's Thursday, December 10th, at 6:00 PM. And I think right after that, we'd be ready to make a presentation to the full city council, either at the December 16th meeting or the meeting, first meeting in January at the president's discretion.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Rist?
Just a request to both of those ad hoc committees, please supply us with a good detailed report of what you're suggesting, uh, at least two weeks in advance of the meeting or, I mean, with a packet, I, it's important to us that we'll be able to read up what you're doing. And thank you for your work on those committees.
Absolutely. In fact, the, uh, senior tax workoff committee, we are working on a presentation, one that will be given to the city council in the meeting. Uh, we just have to get that kind of squared away and then get it into the agenda, so. All right, we have done all of the old business and all of the new business and I will take a motion to adjourn.
Don't move. Don't move.
Second.
Motion to adjourn and second, Barbara?
Uh, JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Aye.
Owen Zarek.